I call this meeting to order, the FM County Planning Board Meeting of June the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to begin this meeting with a word of prayer. We're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'd like to ask that everyone who can please stand with us for both. May I ask Mr. Ryan Thompson to open us?
Thanks, Dave. Your heavenly Father, please be with us tonight and grant us wisdom during the discussions that we were here tonight. And I would like to also take this opportunity to thank you for this wonderful country. We will not have another Planning Board meeting before the Fourth of July, and I just want to say how much we appreciate the blessing it is to live in the United States of America and how proud we are to be here. Please be with those that protect us both domestically and abroad. In your name we pray. Amen.
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 The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Our agenda, Ms. Donegan, are there any items that need to be added or removed?
Yes, Items twelve, thirteen, and fifteen are going to be postponed to the July eleventh Planning Board. Staff is going over county attorney comment and revision.
That's Items twelve, thirteen, and fifteen?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything further? All right. I call for a motion to approve this agenda with the noted changes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith. All is in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all minutes from May ninth. Are there any corrections or additions? Call for a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Zipper. All is in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. All items presented tonight as a public hearing will also be presented again at our next Board of Commissioners meeting. Do we know the date on the Commissioners meeting?
That will be July eighteenth.
July eighteenth. July eighteenth. So all items which are presented tonight as a public hearing will be heard again by the Board of Commissioners. That meeting is also a public hearing in this room at the same time. Items that are approved as well as denied move forward to the Commissioners. I'd like to ask that when the item of your concern is called that you would come forward to the podium, that you would sign your name as well as state your name for the record. Is there anything further this time? Item number one is a public hearing for Jacob Tadlock and Hallie. Tadlock is agent for Buddy Rose, requests rezon five acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the creation of a home site located at five thirty-three Old Lewisville Road, and this is the third district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, the applicant is proposing to create a one-acre home site, which will be served by an existing easement. Staff is recommending approval.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments from the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? No comments from the board. I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Motion for approval.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item two is a public hearing for Catherine R. Waddell, requests rezon five point five four acres from AR one to AR two to allow for division of the parcel located at twenty-three thirty-five Springfield-Egypt Road. It's the third district. Ms. Donegan?
The applicant is proposing to separate one acre for sale and recombination with the lot next to it. The adjacent lot is part of Harmony Acres, which is a subdivision of all conforming AR one lots. It will not access, change access, or form, or character to the subdivision. Staff is recommending approval.
All right. Questions, comments at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Um, Catherine, I'm just asking y'all to okay this.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? All right. Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with all staff recommendation.
A motion for approval. Second, Mr. Thompson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item three is a public hearing for Ashley N. Hines, is agent for Richard Lancaster, requests rezon five point eight nine acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the creation of a home site located at eleven oh one Springfield-Egypt Road, and this is the third district. Ms. Donegan?
This is a family division of land to create a four point eight nine acre home site. Staff is recommending approval. I don't have too much to say.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
I was just signing in for Ashley Hines.
All right. Do you have anything you wish to add to those comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board? All right. Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four is a public hearing for Tammy Pack, requests conditional use for a residential business located at twelve ninety-nine US Highway eighty, and this is the first district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, the applicant is requesting a residential business for a massage business. Unfortunately, there are some aspects which do not meet the conditions for a residential business. The layout plan that the applicant submitted indicates that it exceeds the allowable space allowed within the dwelling for the business, so staff does have to recommend denial.
Can you explain a little bit more about the space?
Residential businesses are limited to no more than thirty-five percent of the total heated floor area or seven hundred square feet, whichever is less. As you can see in the layout, more than thirty-five percent is occupied by treatment areas. There's also reception desk type setup. It's also questionable given the layout, although it'd be speculation that the applicant would be able to reside there as the bedrooms are treatment rooms.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was trying to see if he would approve this because I have a therapeutic massage business for the veterans and for people that have surgery and other clinical aspects of my business. It's not a spa. I don't do spa work. I do more therapeutic work or medical. I also do CEU classes, which I train, medical massage and for prenatal. So I'm asking to get this approved, and if I have to live there, I can make a space to live there. It's just that if a business is a rural business, I have, she said, to draw out a map of what it would look like, but that's not how it is right now. So I do have a livable space there if I need to have it, but other than that, my business is more therapeutic and it's all professional.
All right. Can I get you to state your name, please?
My name is Tammy Pack.
Thank you, ma'am. So you aren't planning on living there?
Um, I'm gonna live there if I need to, but if you, it's up to the board to tell me whether I can or cannot live there. That's my issue, is to see if I can live there, it's okay. If I cannot live there or reside there, again, that's possible too. But I do have, I have been in the county, and I have been doing this work with Dr. Hamby and a lot of chiropractors for the past nine years, so I have been in the county. I just didn't want to leave out the county, and because that's the closest thing to not leaving the county is where I'm at.
Dave, can I ask, how long have you been operating or trying to operate out of this structure?
Um, I've been trying to, well, when I first started, I got, I bought the building, I purchased it, and then someone told me from ranking that I had to come here and get a license, so I came here and I applied, and they told me I had to come on May. Then they changed again to come in June. So I have a contract with the VA. I have a contract with Workman's Comp for the state, and so I just have to work on those people.
So who lives there? I mean, because it's a residential business. I mean, there's a residence there and it has a business.
Right, me.
So you live there?
I've heard the property.
You live there?
Yes, sir.
I thought you said she would try to live there if she had to. You're not living there now.
Well, I'm living there now. I have my stuff there, but if you tell me I can't live there, then I have to move my stuff.
By definition, I mean, it's a residential business, so you're living there and you have a business associated with your home.
Right.
Is, so, I mean, are these not conversations that staff has had?
No, they didn't really tell me that.
Staff, staff has met with Ms. Pack on multiple occasions.
Okay.
Um, there is, and I'm not sure if the gentleman is here.
There is a gentleman to speak.
Yeah, there is a gentleman there.
I'd like to speak. There was a code enforcement complaint submitted, which has since been closed regarding a parking lot going in, but there was no violation there.
Is there anything stopping from rezoning to business?
Uh, it might be difficult to support in that this is part of a major subdivision. That is something that could be attempted. We could take a look at the application.
Is road access off of eighty?
There is frontage on eighty.
Are there any additional questions or comments at this time? Ms. Pack, we may have some questions for you in a moment. If you'll let this gentleman speak, please.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is David Dye. I'm the next door neighbor, thirteen oh seven US Highway eighty. We share the same driveway along with four other homes using the same driveway. I brought pictures in case you guys want to see them. I don't know how, if you have a camera, no you don't, of the driveway. I don't know, should I?
You, we can see it over here, right over this way.
I highlighted the drive that goes in front of the house between USA Highway eighty and our house. It's kind of a shared accessway. Everybody pulls in the same driveway, then everybody parts different directions. Most of the cars pass right in front of my house, but we all share the same entrance. There are two technical entrances on other opposite sides, but my side, the side right in front of my house, between my house and Ms. Pack's house, which is thirty-nine yards between the two buildings, we all share the same access road. And when I first talked to them, when they first moved in or first bought the house, I welcomed them and said it'd be, you know, if you guys need anything, let me know. They said, oh, we're not going to be living here. This is just going to be the business. I said, oh, what kind of business? And they said, massage business. I said, you're going to put a massage parlor next door to my house? All right. So I don't want any signs in front of my house saying massage parlor. I guess you guys would probably understand that. Even if it is a medical massage, that doesn't matter. I'm sure my other neighbors share the same opinion. They just didn't know about this. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Dye? No, sir. We thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
I think Ms. Pack.
Questions? Ms. Pack, you, yes, ma'am, you can.
Can you move up that picture, please? Because I just paid for a driveway so that it would not be, because it's, it is a public access road, but I did pay for a driveway to be put there just so that my clients would not disturb his, and I wouldn't disturb him coming in, because if he pulled in, then. Can you see the picture? It's right here. So if you pull in here to my property, then if I back in, my lights would shine into his house. So I made a property. I made a access road when you come in.
Ms. Pack, we can't, we can't see, but you can just tell us.
Can you see it? Oh, I'm sorry. It's on that side. But if you pull in, I have a road directly off of that one, and I just paid a lot of money to put it there. But he called the county to come out, and they came out, Mr. Griffin, I believe it is. You can get ahold of him, and he said, he asked me, was I putting asphalt out there? And I told him, no, sir. I was putting, making a driveway to my house. And he said, we don't see anything wrong with that. And I said, thank you, sir. And he left. But there's no one access road. It is now two. And I don't have any signs up, no nothing. No one disturbs him or anything, and that is not what was said when I met him.
So you put a driveway on the Highway eighty?
No, on my property, on the grass, I suppose.
Oh, okay.
Can you?
So I guess you're.
It's right there, right in the trees, onto the grass. So if you come to that side door right there, there's a big gravel parking driveway, and it's not disturbing him or anything. And I did not meet him and tell him I was putting a massage parlor. A massage parlor and a therapeutic massage place is two different things, and a massage parlor is not what I do, if anybody knows the difference between the two.
Um, all right. Any questions this time?
Any question?
No, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Pack.
All right, thank you.
Discussion from the board?
I can appreciate what Ms. Pack is doing for the veterans, but I think she's doing it in the wrong venue. That's a residence right there, and she's trying to create a commercial operation. I can understand why it's, staff says deny.
You know, there's been debate about what use or what it's called, but I'm just looking at the standards we've got to use, the thirty-five percent or seven hundred square feet and what's been submitted, being compliant with that, and it doesn't appear to be that was the intent, to be a residential, a residential business, which to be a business, and that's.
It looks like the whole house is set up to be a.
Yeah, I mean, you got an office and three treatment rooms. And this is a residential business, so this is final here, correct?
Correct.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to deny the request.
I have a motion for denial. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All is in favor, denial. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Sorry, Ms. Pack. I mean, I know it's a great business what you're doing, and I hope you can find somewhere that you can carry on or figure out a way to maybe make this work. Item five is a public hearing for Holly Winkler, requests a conditional use for a rural business located at five ninety Old Tusculum Road. It's the third district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, the applicant has an existing record business and in sort of obtaining a business liant, excuse me, attempting to obtain a business license, we had a discussion that it was a bit out of compliance with the scope of home occupation. attempting to obtain a business license, uh, we had a discussion that it was a bit out of compliance with the scope of home occupation. Um, so she is requesting to have approval for a rural business, really the extent of which would be, um, home office, parking of four vehicles, and a future shop on site. The applicant does not have the requisite three acres, however, does own the surrounding property, which buffers the business site. And the board has approved in the past similar configurations, as long as they equal the three acres. Staff is, and the vehicles, um, the site plan is in your packet, but basically they are parked behind the home in the back of the property and staff is recommending approval.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just asking for is, we, I do have three point four acres. I just got four records. That's the only reason I need to, because it's not zoned together. One acre is zoned and then the two point four acres is zoned separately. So that's the only reason. Cause I have what they call a fleet. It has to be over three acres or at three acres.
Can I get you to state your name, please?
Holly Winkler.
Thank you, ma'am. So you will basically just park there?
That's it.
Park the records only, but you're not bringing salvage cars?
No, I'm not. We, we don't keep cars there. We don't, we don't store cars there.
Any further discussion? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Ms. Winkler, we may have a question for you in a moment, if you could let this lady speak, please. Thank you.
I'm, I'm her sister and next door neighbor, Melissa Bragg. And, um, and they have a, you know, a good business for their livelihood, for their family, and there's, I mean, there's been no issues with them having the vehicles there. And then like she said, they don't have salvage vehicles there. And the property surrounding it is, we're the neighbor. Our, our actual bedroom is on the side of the property closest to them. And then everything else around them is, is basically wooded.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Discussion from the board, yes, sir.
I guess I, my, my question might be for staff. So with the three acre minimum, are we saying they would recombine the parcels to be three acres now, or?
Um, no, sir. In the past, if it is adjacent property under the same ownership, and it, it looks like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like at one point it was rezoned, in fact, to cut out the one acre home site.
It's family land is what it is. It's been in my family for over a hundred years. My mom just separated it between me and my sister. So whenever something, God forbid, happens to her, there won't be any questions on whose land is what.
But there, there is precedent without recombination, counting adjacent land under the same ownership towards those three acres, as long as it's not developed, which it's not.
Okay, so should we make it clear that, assuming we moved forward with it, that they have to stay under the same ownership? You can't sell that adjacent property?
That's not gonna happen anyway.
Well, but there's, just, just to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, I think if the rule's three acres, then that's fair. Or it has to always maintain three acres if it's gonna be in existence, if that's the, what the rule is.
Um, so, okay. Perhaps the condition then that the conditional use expands to three sixty-six eleven as well?
To me somehow it's gotta be tied to it, um, either through us adding a condition that specifically references that those two parcels have to stay within the same ownership.
Okay.
Cause the conditional use only applies to the applicant, right? It doesn't apply to the property.
Correct.
Right, so if they were to sell the business or the house, the conditional use wouldn't apply anymore anyway. Am I correct in saying that, right?
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere. My mom was born in the house right beside me, so we're not gonna.
I understand. I just wanted to clarify for future.
Any further discussion?
That's a good point, though.
I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations and also add the stipulation in that if the surrounding property ever sold into business would have to go away.
The surrounding property?
That the, what you don't have cut out in that one plot, the whole tract's three point four acres?
Yes. Uh, I, the one acre I bought years ago, that has my house on it.
Hmm.
Um, the acreage that's beside it, that surrounds it, my mom, that's what my mom gave me.
So what I'm saying is you can't go and sell three sixty-six dash eleven and still maintain the business?
No, no. That's not gonna happen either.
Alright, I have a motion. Everyone understand? Any discussion? Call for a, call for a second.
I'll second that.
Second. All's in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Item six, the public hearing for Brayley Investment Properties, is agent for HT Savannah Properties LLC, requests to rezon six point zero eight acres from R one to B three to allow for a business development located at eight seventeen East US Highway eighty, first district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, sir. We have, um, actually a few similar items on the agenda to this one. The applicant is, uh, proposing to rezone to B three to, um, develop basically an office, limited fleet parking, and at some point in the future, a three to four bay maintenance shop, just for use for the business. Uh, there will be no retail or customer traffic on site to speak of. Staff is recommending approval.
Any discussion at this time? Yes, sir.
Just hear if there's any questions.
Get your name, please, sir.
Brandon Long.
Alright, sir. I know the last item we had like this, um, I know Dogwood Way was a concern. No entrance on Dogwood Way?
We are, no, no entrance or exit on Dogwood Way, no, sir. Highway eighty access only.
Is there a buffer?
There will be a twenty-five foot buffer, a natural buffer there, along with a, uh, a fence.
On Dogwood.
Along Dogwood?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Can we see the adjacent zoning map again?
Absolutely.
I always get confused between what's already.
All residential.
There's, there's two shades of blue. One's a residential, one's a business. Always struggle to define the difference between those two. And the.
And this, this is the TK Electric site, which was recently approved.
Okay.
That was the most recent one.
That was the one I was trying to get my bearings on, okay.
And staff has added as a condition that there will be no access via Dogwood Way.
And I get, just, is the use to the point it needs to be B three?
Yes. Or it is, it is recommended, when taking into account, uh, use and surrounded properties. There's also, um, potentially more requests for B three in this immediate area.
Is there any further at this time?
No.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Is there any additional discussion? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the, uh, staff recommended condition of no access to Dogwood Way or access to Dogwood Way being prohibited.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Zipper. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, sir. Item seven, the public hearing for TND Enterprises, is agent for Clayton Morgan. Request to rezon eighteen of one hundred and thirty-one point ninety acres from AR one to PD MR to allow for a surface mine located at Lowground Road and Midland Road. And this is the first district. Ms. Donegan?
This is, this is our first, um, mine pond over ten acres PD. It is going to be approximately an eighteen acre extension to old mining activity. The applicant has met the conditions of the PD, including, uh, just submitted the agreement to allow county access. Staff has discussed access. They will be obtaining a traffic, uh, that a traffic impact study would not be required. And hours of operation will be seven AM to five PM. Access is going to be on Lowground Road. Staff is recommending approval.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Any discussion at this time?
Will the road going in and out of that pit be the same as the original pit? Same entrance?
Well, what they're digging in now is currently just a one acre pit. Um, as we discussed in the pre-op meetings, see, Katie, if you put the other one up, um, there's a access closer to, um, the stop sign at Midland. So it'll be closer up toward, toward, uh, Midland than where it is right now.
Can I ask you to state your name, please?
Doug Morgan, EMC engineer.
Thank you, sir. So it's moving. It's just gonna be a little further down.
But it's still.
It will still be coming out on Midland or it'll be coming out on Lowground?
No, it'll be coming out on Lowground. And you can see the, the digging operations is approximately four hundred and sixty-five feet off of Midland. So that access is a little more than four hundred and sixty-five feet, four seventy-five.
And at the end of the day, it's gonna be two separate ponds.
Correct. The, that's, uh, a pond we just closed out. They started digging in that one several years ago. Um, and, uh, the landowner wanted another one, so she wanted this one.
So it's just a continuation of that one acre, uh, pit that's there right now?
Yes, sir. And our next step, if this goes through, will be to submit EPD to the surface mining unit.
Any further discussion or comments at this time?
I guess it's just that, I guess we talked about that access road. Was that directly driven by trying to minimize the distance on, was there a reason why it was moving?
Um, there was no, I mean, the drive they're using now, I think, was an existing drive, I think. Could be wrong about that. But, uh, no, when we met and had our pre-op meeting, um, we talked about it with staff and, and, uh, that's where it ended up.
Yeah, cause I mean.
I think originally we didn't show an access road, so they asked us to show an access road.
But isn't, weren't you accessing it from Lowground Road?
Oh, that's right.
Yes, sir.
You were, okay.
I was just trying to clarify if there was a staff-driven request to put it there. Did we need to make something specific about keeping it, you know, moving it to that point, so.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? No further discussion, I'll call for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve with staff. Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number eight is a public hearing for Simco Investments Group LLC, requests to rezon twenty-nine point sixty of thirty-nine point ninety-four acres from R one to PDR to allow for a multifamily residential development located at ten ninety-four Goshen Road. This is the second district. Uh, Ms. Donegan?
Yes, the applicant is proposing to put in a ninety-unit, uh, single-family residential community. This, in some ways, is similar to R five zoning. In some ways, it's tighter. The lot size and the lot width are smaller. In response to that, the applicant is proposing two-story homes that are, that are quite narrow. And, in looking at it from a zoning and PD standpoint, it does meet the criteria. Um, I would only point out that they are needing an exemption and did not request it. They are going to need an exemption from the three hundred linear feet at all portions of the property, distance from side to side. They don't have that. I would point out, though, that they're not proposing in any way to develop up at the narrow part.
Hello, my name is Tara Brantley. I live directly across, um, from that area. Um, we own twenty-six acres there. Um, this Goshen Road is becoming very congested. Um, we only have two school districts, as you are well, or two school, high schools, as you are well aware, in the county. Um, they are very, very packed. I come from a place of less population and five school districts. Um, when you start, I understand that the development of the Benton Boulevard will help alleviate some of that traffic, but it becomes quite impossible to, you know, travel to and from work, especially if there's an accident on twenty-one. Civil engineering has not kept up with the increase in population size that has been imposed upon the county. So, um, you, with this, if this gets accepted, it will cause a huge destruction of a lot of, you know, natural, um, forest. We have some very old live oaks there. It will also cause a nuisance. Um, it, it's just, I, I do not believe that this is an effective use to put multifamily dwelling, especially given that the homes directly across from us, on the opposite side of the railroad tracks, have nice spacious lots. These homes will be past the salt neighbors through the window. And again, adjacent to that property, they just developed thirty-four acres, total destruction of all the, of, of all the nature. And, um, it too will increase the congestion on the road and also be more burden on the high schools as well. Um, they have not accommodated for the upgrowth in, as quickly as the growth has come here. And so there's a big concern for that. I still have several children in the schools. Um, their education is very, very important to me. They're all gifted and talented students and I'm afraid that all this influx of extra living without the accommodations in the schooling will also hinder the educational system as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you wish to speak, sir? You wish to speak?
My name is Porter Morgan. I live at one oh three Paddleford. Ninety-nine percent of Goshen Road is all single-family residents, from twenty-one to Hodgville. This does not meet the character of the entire neighborhood. It says multifamily residents. Is this apartments or is this actually owned property by the resident? It's not clear. If it's apartments, those people won't be there very long, cause Norfolk Southern runs trains five, six times a day. And I can guarantee you those whistles will blow them out of there. I wake up every night, especially when they have a four-engine set going. And with the Georgia ports, they're adding more trains every month. And some of those trains are running a hundred to two hundred cars. If you look at their sightings, they did away with all their short sightings and added two mile-long sightings on Norfolk Southern. Same thing for CSX. So if this is rental property, those people aren't gonna stay there. If it's single-family homes, fine. But I also see they have a pond at the back end. We have a drainage ditch that the county is supposed to maintain on the edge of the Paddleford property. They never maintain it. So we have mosquitoes. Now they wanna add more water to make more mosquito control. Not a fit for this community, it's not a fit for Goshen Road. As well as what she just said about congestion. You just approved across the track, I don't know how many, eighty-five or a hundred houses in that plot with one entrance. So it's getting crowded. The road's not gonna be able to handle it. And I've also seen now the class six, class seven trucks are starting to use Goshen Road. That's not a designated truck route. And when they open up Effingham Parkway, those trucks go on and take short routes to get to twenty-one. They go down to. They go down to thirty to get to Benton Boulevard. That's as far as they go. They gotta turn on thirty. They can't go into Port Wentworth and Pooler. That's a no-truck zone. This is getting worse, more and more. I'd recommend you look at the impacts the developers are putting on the existing communities. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Is there a representative for Simco?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to clarify. There, there is an error, error in both the staff report and the agenda. This is, these are proposed detached, single-family, not multifamily.
Detached, single-family. Okay.
So is it gonna be ninety houses?
I don't know. We're fixing to find out.
Good afternoon. I'm Elick Metzger with EMC Engineering. So that was the first point I was gonna bring up is this is not multifamily. It was a mistake. It's, it's single-family residential. Each house will be on its own lot. The lots will be for sale. So Goshen, Grace Community Church is looking to sell about twenty-nine acres. So what we're proposing is to do a, a little bit different kind of residential subdivision with a little bit smaller lot. And we used the R5 zoning that has been, you know, recently developed and gone through and improved as a guideline. But instead of coming in, coming in under R5 and asking for multiple variances, we figured it'd be better to come with a planned development and show exactly what we wanted to do. So we're talking about four lots, I mean, ninety lots. The allowable net density is four units per acre. We're under that. As part of the sale from the Goshen Church property, they're gonna keep the front about ten acres. So we're gonna provide a twenty-five-foot planted buffer on one side of the property where our entrance road is. And then they didn't want any of the lots to face the, I mean, back up to the church. So there'll be no lots on the entrance that back up to the church. On the north, on their north property line will be a twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer. And then also as part of the sale, all of the large oak trees that are out in front, those won't be disturbed. We'll work around those and those will actually stay on the church property. On the Paddleford side, we're proposing a thirty-foot undisturbed buffer with a six-foot privacy fence. Anywhere in that buffer that is not, not any vegetation, we'll come in and plant vegetation to increase that buffer. One thing we also did on that side was we pulled all of the lots over to the railroad side of the property as, as far as we could and put the open space that we were maintaining in between the lots and Paddleford. So we tried to do our best to keep lots from backing up directly to the Paddleford subdivision. On the railroad side, we were looking at a twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer. And then up in the north, it's a funny-shaped piece of property. So that's, that's mainly gonna be leftover open space, wetlands, and storm drainage. There will be a homeowners association to provide maintenance of amenities, sidewalks, ponds. And then it'll also go a step further and provide landscaping and lawn care maintenance for each one of the houses. There'll be sidewalks, streetlights, public streets. Parking will be provided, two in a driveway and one in a garage. And then there will be some overflow parking provided at the amenity areas and around the development. The net, the net usable open space that we have is eighteen point one nine percent, which is more than what's required in the R5, R5 zoning. And then the green space, if you count up all of the buffers, ponds, wetlands, and open spaces, about fifty-nine percent of the property. So having the slightly more, more dense lights and smaller development footprint allows us to keep some better green space and open areas in the community. These will be hardy plank siding. And most of the development standards for the buildings in the R5 zoning will be followed as laid out in the PD text. They'll have architectural shingles and they'll be somewhere around in the three hundred thousand dollar range for each unit. And each one will be a fee simple lot on its own lot and these will be for sale. There's a, a building plan in, I think in your packet that shows kind of a rough layout and elevation views. These units will be around seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, heated, two-story. And then I've got kind of a, a picture of some that's not exactly the same, but the only difference is, uh, these units we're talking about will have a garage. So, uh, like I said, again, this is not multifamily. This is single-family. It's developed in close range of the R5 zoning that been working on with the county. And we feel like it'll be a good use for the property. And we ask that you support this rezoning. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion or questions from the board at this time?
These are, these would be homes for sale, not rental.
Mr. Metzger.
Not a rental community.
These'll be individual lots, homes for sale.
And this will be covered by the recent ordinance the county adopted related to controls on that? I'm assuming the PD doesn't need to clarify that? I just, I guess that's a question for staff.
I'm, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
Related to the whole rental aspect, not that I have, I mean, rental for sale. I'm just asking for clarification from a standpoint, is there any, any, that? The ordinance change that the commissioners adopted a couple of months ago would apply to this, whether it's PD or R5 or right, it would control that from the, I think it's what, twenty percent of the?
Twenty percent, yeah.
Yes. First year from CO.
And I guess I do have a question related to the parking. The, help me understand. You said there was gonna be three parking spaces per unit. I, I see the PD text calls for a fifteen-front setback. So if you actually put the unit at fifteen, we're only getting one parking space in the garage, right?
Yeah, one in the garage and two in between the sidewalk and, and, and the house.
And Mr. Thompson, the, the rental, the twenty percent is for R5. That was not adopted into the subdivision rates.
So they only passed R5?
Correct.
Yeah, there's additional room between the property line and the, and the sidewalk. So it's, it's more than twenty feet between the sidewalk and the front of the building. The front setback is just, uh, from the property line.
Okay, so?
So there's, there's sufficient room behind the sidewalk, in between the sidewalk and the garage to park a car without impeding the sidewalk.
Any sort of a sketch that shows how that works? I can't wrap my head around that. I think a bit of the front of it will be.
It's exactly like a, a typical residential house.
But they're not twenty feet?
Yeah, they're, they're a little bit, they're a little bit more. So they may be twenty-five feet on the front setback. So there's just more room between the sidewalk and the house. These are pushed forward a little bit, but they're still more than twenty feet between the sidewalk and the house.
I, I just.
So it'll be wide enough for two.
I have no problem with density. I actually believe in it a lot. I think this picture is a great representation. I actually would prefer it not to have the garages with the parking lot in the front. Those ribbon drives beside each of the units, I think, changes the street scape completely. So that's, I just curious, that's a big effect.
Park directly in front of the houses and?
Exact, exactly like a normal house.
What's the width of the lot?
It's gonna be thirty.
Thirty-six by.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six by?
Thirty-six by ninety-six.
Thirty-six by ninety-six.
So the whole front will be a park?
It'll be eighteen, it'll be eighteen feet. Half of it'll be driveway.
So is it the developer's vision? These aren't first-time home buyers at three hundred thousand dollar price point. So is, this is not a retirement community either. So what do you guess to make the average age group of these people are forty-five to fifty?
It could be anybody.
Any further discussion at this time? Mr. Metzger, we may have some questions for you in a moment.
Thank you.
Is anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Point of clarification.
Mr. Morgan, can I get you to speak into this microphone, please, sir?
Yeah.
These meetings are being taped. Thank you, sir.
Does a twenty-five-foot buffer include the easement for the county to clean the ditch? Or is that in addition to that easement? And will you provide access for the county to go in to do ditch maintenance?
We'll get clarification for, on that in a moment.
And also, are there gonna be streetlights? Because we have a dark neighborhood. We don't have night lighting. We don't need it. We don't want it. So any streetlight stuff shining over and outside is not acceptable.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Kenneth Lack. We moved with my wife to the Paddleford subdivision. We currently reside at number one, two, three. From the packets, the PDFs that were available and from anything I've heard tonight or the discussion from the Simco representatives, there's a lot of information missing regarding the nature of the Paddleford neighborhood and what's going on. And I hope after seeing how you've handled character neighborhood issues tonight, you will take some of these things into account. If at any point, because of the nature and the breadth and the number of things I'm about to raise, you want to have a discussion at that point, please interrupt me. Just hold up a hand, say I'll speak up. And I'm happy to stop and we can discuss some of this stuff. But there's been a lot of density going in, in the general neighborhood of Goshen Road. Just recently, you guys actually allowed a rezoning to R6 of a hundred and sixty-four acres on the other side of the railroad tracks. Phase one Horton is putting in might only be the first hundred or so odd homes. But the same holding company that they use to hold property that throughout Chatham and Effingham and the rest of the regions owns the remainder of that hundred and twenty-something acres that was already zoned to be in R6. So when we talk about impacts on the schools and on the traffic, on the roadways, we need to remember, we have that going in. At the end of the Goshen Road extension, Highway twenty-one, there is, I think it was like a six-hundred-unit, multi-story apartment complex that they just knocked down all those trees for several hundred feet. That's going in. And all those cars are gonna be burdening that Goshen Road, which if you're familiar or you recall back to twenty-nine, twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty T-Splopped and the packets you put together in the studies and the traffic studies, without the Horton development, without those apartments already there, Goshen Road was already projected with over, I think it was like a nine-point-four score as an overburdened roadway. Now that included planning for the Effingham Parkway extension going in, but that did not include all these new homes and all these new apartments that are gonna want to shoot back and forth across that road. And that's gonna be a problem. You know, we lived, when I had my legal practice as an attorney up in Atlanta, we saw firsthand all the destruction that rapid changes in the neighborhood without the infrastructure being in place imposed. We saw it in Cobb County. We saw it in Fulton County. We saw it in DeKalb County. When we first moved down here, we lived in Chatham County. We lived in Pooler. You know, there's a lot of people in Effingham County who used to say, you know, Pooler used to be the place people wanted to be. Now nobody wants to be in Pooler. You know, people didn't want to be in Savannah because of the density and all the problems and everything that came with it and the quality of life. They said, okay, we want to be in Pooler. Well, we've seen what happened in Pooler with rapid changes where they thought they had good infrastructure, but they really didn't. They didn't wait to see the incremental change. We have a ton of new residents coming in. Now, the documents for the Simco development are showing houses that have three bedrooms plus a loft. In practical terms, you know, a lot of families will turn that into a fourth bedroom, even though it's not designated so on the plans. Despite having ninety units that they're claiming, that's roughly two hundred seventy to three hundred sixty bedrooms, they claim there would only be thirty-odd new students in the public schools for that whole development. That just doesn't sound realistic. I don't know who's buying three-bedroom homes with potential for a fourth and they're gonna send a single kid into the school system and only a third of the units are even gonna do that. That just doesn't make any sense if you use common sense. Maybe there's mathematical formulas they're using or pre-approved standards that people try to abide by. But that just absolutely makes no sense. We have a difference on the east side of the railroad tracks versus the west side. The west side that knew R6 development and even the pre-existing development that was next to it, they're on public water. They got sewer. You know what Paddleford and the seventy-seven homes in Paddleford depend on? They depend on a community well just a couple hundred feet from the detention pond these guys want to put in. A five-acre or so holding pond that will have wastewater runoff from all of these densely-packed units. Because if you look closely at their proposal, the side setbacks on these tiny, narrow lots is seven and a half feet. It's not even seven and a half feet from me to you. And that's how much space will be in between the houses. How much water do you think the ground can absorb with all the heavy rain we get in this area? Versus how much is gonna go into these ponds? They've identified that on their plan because in the front wetlands area they identify, they say there's a pumping station going in. Well, is that just gonna pump more wastewater into that back pond? I haven't seen any hydrological studies referenced. In fact, if you look at their map, they didn't even care to mark where the Paddleford community well is located. If you care to look on the map, you'll see Paddleford's kind of like a zipper. If you look where they have their detention pond and you go east three parcels, you're gonna see a tiny square. That tiny square happens to be right behind our house, right next to a drainage easement ditch, which goes directly to where they want to put this detention pond. Now, you've got railroad cars going up and down with brake linings, throwing off asbestos dust and all kinds of other pollution. And all that's gonna float right in the pond that goes right against the railroad track. And all the oils, all the contaminants that come off the roads, come off the roofs, come off the yards, come off all these cars they're parking outside on these driveways that they're putting in these narrow little alleys to a house. All that's gonna run off. And where's that gonna go? That's in that detention pond. That's wastewater. That's not clean water. If you were in a city, they would require that to go in a treatment plant before you could release it in a river or anywhere else. We haven't seen any information, did they confirm this older well that was put in in the nineteen eighties as a community well? How deep the lining goes? Or if surface water or shallow groundwater? Which I can tell you, I can dig a hole in my yard and it starts filling up with water from the ground if I go deep enough. There's shallow groundwater in the area. What is all that runoff, all that wastewater gonna do to that community well? If you were trying to build that well after that detention pond went in, the public health department would have serious questions and wouldn't want you to do it. They'd say it's too close. They'd say you can't put that well water there. If that well water goes bad, Paddleford has no water. You don't even have a water main running down our street. And we're not gonna be the ones to pay to put it in. And we're not gonna want to pay connection charges to get access back to water. So effectively, what you're saying is you're putting us at a risk of a condemnation of all seventy-seven homes for public health concerns. But while we're talking about the lack of sewer in these other detention pond areas and these runoff issues, everybody is on septic tanks. If you look at those houses in Paddleford that back up to this subdivision and back up to where these detention ponds and all the rest of that is, they have septic tanks in their backyard. So when you're raising the high water table even further with all this water in this detention pond, you know, we'll call it water and not wastewater for the. you know, we'll call it water and not wastewater for the time being, even though really it would be, you know, contaminated for all intents and purposes, what are you gonna do when that septic tank fails? There's not alternate sites for these Paddleford homes to go move that somewhere else. Again, is this county gonna put in a free sewer main, not charge the customary recompense cost to recover the cost of putting in the, uh, infrastructure, not charge connection fees, and basically say, well, we'll give you a free sewer because your septic tank, you didn't pay them up with payment to use? I highly doubt it, but that's what, you know, the entire community is being exposed to at this point. We heard a lot of talk about non-disturbed areas. If you've ever been by that property, I don't know if any of you have visited or any of the staff visited the property itself, it's been logged in the past. There's no trees left. So when they say we're gonna have this undisturbed area, there's nothing there but scrub. It's two, three feet high. Right now, if you're on the road snaking through Paddleford, you can see into that lot. There's no tree. So when they say there's an undisturbed barrier, it's a barrier of nothing. It will have no effects screening light, screening noise. It will not accomplish any of the goals of a typical undisturbed area. Normally, you're dealing with a wooden parcel, and they say, we won't go ahead and cut down the trees. Now, they say, okay, we'll go put plantings in. You're gonna put a two-foot-tall, three-foot-tall tree? It's gonna take ten, twenty years before it serves the purpose of noise, of vision, of light, of all that disturbance. It just doesn't make any sense. We talk about the water that's already there. We've heard talk of the drainage ditches. Paddleford is a subdivision back in the nineteen-eighties. By eighty-seven, eighty-eight is when they started their development. They laid out a series of ditches. We all have drainage easements that run along our road in the front, but at measured points, notably the corners of that zigzag road, there's a separate drainage ditch that runs west to the border of the property. Now, when we have really heavy rain, all that water needs to go somewhere. It goes towards that ditch. But invariably, for about thirty-five years or so, it's also been draining into that abutting property. It's one of the feeders for the wetlands, because you know the wetlands aren't coming through the railroad tracks from the other side. Well, there's this little thing in Georgia called a prescriptive easement. And to the extent stormwater is being discharged for the last thirty-seven years, the legal standard is only twenty years for the Paddleford subdivision to have the right to discharge the excess stormwater into that parcel, as it's been doing all this time. I do not see any studies, any markings, any acknowledgement whatsoever of release of waters from Paddleford into that parcel. This plan is trying to cram as much profit into the land as they can, and it's not a question of the best or only use of the land. In fact, just a couple hundred yards down the road on Goshen Road, there's a brand-new, single-family house going up right on the road. Someone sold off the front acreage, and a single-family bought it, and they're building a traditional home with normal setbacks, normal sizes, normal density. Just at the back of Paddleford, as you leave that zigzag road, another house is going in right now. They got signs up on the side of the road, you know, they, uh, with the bank that's financing it, all the rest of that. Single-family home, traditional sizing, traditional lot. This development is a cash grab. It is not about in keeping with the nature of the area. You've already heard from someone else, there is nothing else of this density in the area. As a practical matter, when they're talking about making thirty-five, thirty-six, whatever it was, by ninety-foot lots, that is not a traditional R-five zoning lot. What they're doing is they're claiming, well, the total size of the area of the land, even though some of it will never be suitable for development because of the wetlands and the topography and the sizing and all the rest, well, we're gonna buy land that had no value for any use, and instead, we're gonna do an ultra-dense development that has no business being in the area, and certainly not until we see how the rest of the development plays out, and they're trying to cram it in there. And you and I both know, if this development went up next to any house, it's gonna lower the, the value of that adjacent house. We've had surface-level discussions with appraisers that just asked the single question. If you had a development of houses that are on tiny, narrow lots, you know, when, when I lived in New Orleans, they used to call those style houses a shot-in-house, because it was just straight front to back, so narrow, you know. This is land that will never be able to redevelop for any other purpose either, because of how they're setting it up. And they talk about, we're leaving the back acreage undisturbed. They're not leaving it undisturbed. They're digging giant detention ponds in a C-shape around the wetlands. And I think that because of all of these issues, it being so far out of character for the neighborhood, there's all this other development that's been already really dense. There's no reason that they couldn't put the same square, traditional, conforming R-six split of the entire lot, like the Horton homes across the street is, and just leave those wetlands vacant, just means they might only get twenty houses on the land instead of a hundred houses on the land. So I hope that at the very least, the commission chooses to table this request for this rezoning, this approval, will mandate that Simco, for the first time, makes a good faith effort to meet with the property owners that they're seeking impact, which they have not done at any point. As a resident, I can guarantee you that, and other people I have talked to in the neighborhood, none of them have been reached out to either. In fact, not even everybody in that neighborhood who's at risk of losing their well, losing their septic, losing these different things, they didn't even get the letters to come to this meeting, because I know we never got a letter about this meeting. The letters that went out that said, you're a nearby property owner, you may be impacted? Well, you're putting a detention pond a couple hundred feet from my only source of water. You didn't notify me that I was gonna be impacted. And my only guess is Simco didn't tell you that that well was there and that it was so close, and that it was at risk of being poisoned by their development.
Well, Simco doesn't handle the letters, I mean, by county, so. Do you have any additional comments?
Um, the only things that I would remind you of what you seem to have been, um, you know, taking into account so far are, one, you gotta look at the nature, the existing uses, the nearby zoning. Two, you have to take into account the extent to which the neighboring property values will be diminished. Three, you have to balance the extent that you can argue this development promotes health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the public. And when we use the word public, this is the public currently living in Effingham County. This isn't people you wanna attract to move in because new factories are going and whatever. That is not your public. They are not here. They are not your constituents. Four, you have to look at the relative gain to the public compared to the hardship and the risk on the other property owners. Five, you have to look at the suitability of this parcel covered in wetlands that they cannot develop in accordance with this R-five zoning, they claim, unless they shrink the lot sizes and cram them together like sardines in a can. And six, you could consider the time it was vacant as own, but a church has been there and using it this whole time under this R-one zoning. Where do I read those from? Those are legal standards from the Supreme Court of the State of Georgia that has upheld when challenging local zoning board decisions. Official Code of Georgia annotated thirty-six, sixty-six, five-point-one says that your decision will be, uh, up for judicial review as a direct constitutional challenge in Superior Court, and this development will be subject to an automatic stay if the concerns of the neighboring property owners aren't sufficiently addressed and we choose to file that appeal in court. And I can say that finding someone to represent the subdivision will not be a problem, because I must simply pick up the phone, call the state bar in Atlanta, Georgia. I will make my license from inactive to active, and I will leave the litigation if necessary, unless some of these concerns are addressed.
All right, Mr. Lack, you're done.
I just need to sign my name real quick. I got started a little too early there, sir.
All right, sir. Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, I mean, Mr. Lack, I mean, and he did a very good job representing, so, you know, I mean, he, he talked about traffic, the well, the septic, the buffer, uh, the drainage easement, that's the second time we've heard that. We've heard the density, appraisals, nearby properties, and the health and safety of neighbors. So is there anyone else that has any additional information they would like to bring, either in favor or against this request? Mr. Metzger?
I guess I can answer a few of the questions about, um, maybe some of the, some of the items that were brought up. So as far as the drainage goes, I'm assuming the drainage easement is on Paddleford's property. Uh, we're not gonna impact that easement or ditch. All of our stuff will be in addition to that on our property. So any buffers provided, you know, are, are gonna be on our property in addition to a ditch that may be on their property.
So if it's a county ditch, is it going to be, I think the question was, will it be able to be accessed for?
It, it probably has an easement on it, and that would be how they access it right now.
Correct.
So if the county doesn't.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm sure they have it.
So if the county doesn't maintain it, you know, that's not, that's not anything to do with our project.
As long as there's, as long as there's an easement in place for the county to maintain it.
Yes. So, so it should have been.
All right. Um, I'm sorry, but, but Mr. Metzger was, was quiet for everyone else to speak.
Um, so as far as drainage goes, this is a rezoning. We don't get into all the calculations and designing of detention ponds. But the county has rules we have to follow, so, um, we're not allowed to release water onto adjacent properties any faster than they are in the existing condition that it is now. The county has water quality standards also, so the water that we collect in the detention pond, um, we're handling the rate and the quality of that as far as impacting wells. You know, we're not gonna be impacting wells on adjacent properties. We're gonna be using water and sewer and reuse water from Effingham County, so we'll have our own pump station. All of the sewer is collected. It's not going into stormwater detention ponds. It's handled and pumped to the county's treatment plant. All of the water will be handled. The runoff is going to detention ponds. It'll be routed. Any water that's coming from Paddleford now, we're not allowed to like stop that up and dam it up. We have to allow that to keep going the way it's going, so. We may have to have a ditch or a pipe or something that allows it to drain through our property if that's how it's going now. There will be, uh, streetlights required. That's required by Effingham County. Um, they can be designed in a fashion that provides, you know, a minimum foot candle for safe, safety of the public without, you know, glaring and shining onto adjacent properties. The property is, is cleared at some point. I'm not sure exactly how much, so that's why we said, you know, it'll be, uh, any buffers would be undisturbed. They'd be allowed to regenerate and grow how they are. And then we would, um, add to them if they were thin or, or small in areas that was open. And then along, um, the Paddleford side too, we're also gonna have a fence, uh, for some, some additional, uh, buffer requirement. And as far as traffic goes, I believe, maybe staff can chime in on this. I think, uh, Goshen Road is already in the works to be, um, widened to an additional lane.
Is there any discussion from the board or questions for Mr. Metzger? At this time?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to address the, uh, one of the gentleman's earlier comments. One, two, three, Paddleford is not within the two-hundred-foot notification buffer. It's over four-hundred feet away, so that is why you did not get a letter. If, if you'd like to contact me after, speak to me after the meeting, we can, I can discuss that with you. Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir. Very, very, very quickly.
We've heard the statements from the EMC Simco representatives, we'll do this, oh, we'll use treatment. They haven't identified exactly what they'll do and how they'll do it. They're asking you to give an approval without giving the specifics. So they're saying, we'll have runoff, we'll have rainwater runoff from the properties, from the houses, from the driveways that will go in and be stormwater treated, uh, before it goes to the detention pond. They're not saying how they're gonna do that. All these specifics should be spelled out as listed conditions prior to any approval, so there's something to hold them to. And.
I mean, they're, they're, they're under, um, state EPD, I mean, requirements. I mean, if you'll get, let him step to that microphone, maybe he can clear it up.
Right. And, you know, the other thing he says, well, there's state standards for the well to be tested. He's not identifying anything they've done to measure how that water moves or prevent the poisoning. He's saying, well, we'll check it, make sure when it does get poisoned, we'll let you know, but they're not discussing any preventative steps to make sure that doesn't happen. No studies have been done or presented by them. So it's premature to make a decision without having the actual conditions for the development, because PD zoning says, we'll let you do what you want as presented and as approved, and then you're free to go off whatever you do. And so far, they haven't presented any of that in writing, and they should have to.
So, so real quick, um, just for everybody and for the record. So the way the PD zoning works and way all zoning works is you come in and you have, um, a piece of property rezoned to, for a specific use. And so say, say we get approval, um, and the master plan is approved and the PD document is approved. That doesn't, as part of that, uh, approval process, I'm sure that the county will have stipulations that they have on every rezoning just about and it says, follow the county's stormwater ordinance, follow the county's zoning ordinance, follow the other ordinances that the county has in place. Uh, so that, that references all of the standards and ordinances that will be used in the next step. So once this rezone, then we get into the meat and potatoes of the design of the subdivision. So that's when we do all of the topographic surveys, the drainage studies, the roadway grading, uh, detention pond sizing, runoff, signing, marking, water system, sewer system. All of that is designed, uh, detailed, and then submitted to Effingham County, to the State Soil and Water Conservation District, to Environmental Protection District, to the Corps of Engineers, to all of those people, and the county's own review engineer. So all of that is reviewed, um, and then approved. So all that's got to happen. And then once that happens, then, um, after everyone is satisfied that all of the county and state and federal ordinances are met by the design, that's when the construction takes place. So there's a bunch of steps in there. This is just the first step. And a lot of the requirements that he's mentioning are not required at this step, and they will be done later when we get into detailed, uh, design and documentation of the subdivision. So that, that's just a brief overview, and that's why we're not saying we have a drainage study here tonight, because we, we don't have one. Um, we haven't done one yet, and that'll be done later.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak? All right. This time I'm gonna close public comment and open the discussion up to the board.
I think I've got a question for staff, and just to remind me, what, what is the, what's the code requirement for a depth of a off-street parking space? Is it eighteen feet deep, twenty feet deep?
I believe it's twenty. Google, give us just a second.
And I, I go back to what my original comment was. I, I don't have a problem with density per se. I just am concerned with the aesthetic that the streetscape's gonna have if we've got, again, the picture that was provided. Granted, it may be more dense than what the adjacent property owners would like, but I think the bigger aspect of that is that ribbon drive down the side. And if there were some standards in this PD text that would support that and give some controls to that, so the aesthetics of the community are controlled by that, I wouldn't have as much concern with it. I guess a follow-up question is also thirty-six feet wide. I think I'm aware of a couple of other PDs that have forty-foot-wide, um, single-family lots. Do we know of any that have? Do we know of any that have 36 or less than 40?
Not, not offhand. And just to clarify, are you asking what the width of the road needs to be for off-street parking? Are you asking the specific depth of individual parkings?
Yeah, for it to actually count as off-the-ride-away parking, the depth of the parking space that would need to be.
Gotcha.
We can go on, I just...
I mean, I agree. I mean, it's, you know, when I look at the map, I mean, if it was a straight R5, R6 development, I mean, I don't see how it's, can be denied. But this is something new, and when you introduce something new, then you can never take it back. I think it's a forever rule change, and that scares me as the zoning board. I think that's something that county commissioners need to decide if this is the type of development they want. But, you know, I mean, I have a lot of concern with, you know, 36 by 96, 3,458 square-foot lot, I'll just be honest. I think we're opening the door.
I have a lot of concern with the density and the amount of traffic, the amount of cars that's gonna be put in there, three-bedroom homes. There's gonna be at least two cars at every one, and a lot of them's gonna have three. I think it's gonna be a real tight, congested neighborhood. I got an issue with that myself.
This is very similar to the development that we denied over on Midland a couple of months ago because of the density, and only it had one ingress. And that's what that looks like there, too.
Yeah, I did ask the question about the 40-foot-wide lot. I'm not saying that that's going less than that, it's not something we might should consider at some point, it's just that seems very villagey around a node of density, that kind of concept might be in place. I just, I think I've gotta wrap my head around, can you make it conforming the way I'm seeing that site plan, or the concept of the lot there, to be able to provide at a minimum of two off-street parking spaces outside of the rideaway?
Anything else? All right. Somebody make a motion, please.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
A motion for denial, is there a second?
I'm gonna second that.
Second motion, Mr. Higgins, seconds. All those in favor of denial?
Nah.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. This board is merely a recommendation to the county commissioners, so this item will be at the county commissioners on Ju... July the 18th, also as a public hearing. This time, we're gonna take a short recess. I call the meeting back to order. Item number nine is a public hearing for TNT Exley Property. Request to rezonate 274 acres from PDMU to PDMU to allow for the amendment of a planned development located off Highway 21, 2nd District.
Mr. Chair, I will be recusing myself from this agenda.
All right, sir. Yes, sir. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, so this is, this is what is known as the North Tract, attached to what we commonly refer to as GITC. There are four involved parcels. The original PD was established in 2008 and featured, as you can see here, multifamily housing with a 30-foot buffer, 15 feet which was to be vegetative. The applicant is proposing to amend the PD document eliminating multifamily housing and putting in additional warehouses, industrial use with a 100-foot berm with a, excuse me, a 100-foot buffer with a 25-foot berm. There was a town hall meeting held last week where citizens came out and expressed concern, their concerns, for the record, were light and noise pollution, burden to roads, proximity of development to property lines, appearance from residential properties, destruction of natural habitat, and the potential for a future rail spur. Staff has added the conditions that no rail spur be permitted. Any planned trailer storage must be approved as additional conditional use, because that was added to the PD as allowable use for industrial, and that any berms installed be a minimum of 20-foot, 5-foot high as opposed to a maximum of 25-foot high. The applicant has submitted today some additional exhibits, including what the layout would look like if there were a 300-foot buffer with no berm instead of the 100 with a berm. They have also submitted, which you have copies of, some extensive sound studies showing decibel levels with both configurations, with and without berm. And I have multiple slides on that. I believe there's representatives for the applicants here, they probably want to talk about it a little bit more. Staff is recommending approval for this request.
Is there a representative here for TNT?
Yes. I'm Murray Marshall, I represent TNT Exley. The Exley family has owned this property since back in the 60s. This, as was just stated by staff, this PDMU was approved in 2008. This particular section is approved for 1,350 multifamily units. 15 feet off the northern property line, I know she just stated it, but I'm emphasizing it, 15 feet off the northern property line is a buffer, a non-disturbed buffer, and then additional 15 feet for a total of 30 feet to the building setback line. That is what's approved as we speak tonight. The 1,350 is what's approved as we speak tonight. We want to not do that. We want to put in roughly 11, 1,100,000 square feet or thereabouts is what's shown on this plan, but we want to convert this to an industrial use, and we want to have, it's 115 feet, the original submission did say 100 feet, but 115 feet of a buffer with a 25-foot-tall berm. The first 15 feet off the adjoining property line would be held or to capture, any stormwater that's coming out of the existing development would then get on our property, we would capture it and direct it into pipes that would go under the berm. We're proposing a 25-foot tall berm to minimize, actually, it's to keep the sound level at a, fully developed sound level would be at basically what is there now, maybe even a little bit better than the sound level that's there now. And you have in your packet exhibits that demonstrate that. If you look at the exhibit that's in there that is for 115-foot on the sound exhibits, the 115 feet with the berm, you'll see the chart on the right-hand side of the page has varying colors. The green is the target that we are trying to get to. If you look at that, the blow-up sections, and I think there are four blow-up pages in there, you'll see that the berm captures the noise down to a level of 45 or less, all the way from 21 back to the railroad track with the 25-foot berm. If you do a 300-foot buffer, which granted, we don't have the right to put industrial in right now, but it's been said several times that if you put a 300-foot buffer, then that conforms to what has been approved in other sections of the county. But if you look at the sheet that has the 300-foot buffer, you'll see that you get a heavy concentration of yellow. It goes from, the green is the best, down into yellow, then into red. You'll see that that yellow goes well into the existing subdivision. We don't want to do that. We want to build the berm to keep the noise level, the sound level acceptable. Excuse me. The other consideration that we have shown exhibits for is the line of sight. We were initially asking for, excuse me, the current PDMU in the industrial section allows up to 75-foot-tall building. We asked for that when we made the submission. After listening to the neighborhood and looking at our line-of-sight exhibits, we have, we're changing that to 56 feet, which will allow us to do a 45-foot clear height inside the building. That, to us, is a significant drop in the height of the building. The line of sight at a 45-foot building, which we show on there, you don't see it, and actually with all the tree cover that will be on the berm and shrubbery that will be on the berm, once it matures, you won't see these buildings. Again, we're already approved for one use, we don't want to do that. We will if we have to, you know, if we don't succeed in getting industrial, then we'll embark on the residential. And I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Any questions this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Leighton Costello, I live at 173 Huger. And... Oh, sorry. Whoa! Okay. I sent each of you an email this week. It was just a quick and dirty itemized list. Basically, I support, in general, this, the rezoning for the industrial, for the warehouse, provided that we, as much as possible, preserve the existing forested areas, there's some nice, lovely live oaks back there, if we can mitigate that, as well as if it's within this design scope of, for the warehouse, to put the loading dock, offloading and onloading docks opposite, on the opposite side of the residential side, still keeping functionality. I don't think they would impact any productivity issues that they have. It would also go a long way to reduce the noise level that we would potentially have... It would also go a long way to reduce the noise level that we would potentially have on our side. But I certainly, one thing I really do not want is the possibility of 2,600-plus individuals on my back door. Uh, that's just way too much. That's like the other you dealt with, and the residence was too dense. We've got too much density there right now. A lot of folks in the area will think that the property values will go down. I don't see that as an issue simply because I think this area, the coastal empire, the low country, this whole area is expecting to grow by at least 100,000 within the next 100 years. Our neighborhood has lots of real estate around these houses. We're not packed in there like sardines. That is going to be a valuable commodity with us going into the future. But we need to preserve at least some semblance of a, we can isolate ourselves, I guess if you will, and keep that, uh, as possible. If it, and they also, there was some discussion about mitigation of some of the wetland, uh, to kind of scoot. So there's not much pressure of the industrial side against the property line to go south. Especially that northern end, that big block that's up there. Move it further down. Still keep the 25-foot berm for the noise issues. But preserve much of the, uh, the warehouses possible. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Costolo.
My name's Ted Stroud, and, um, I live at Highland Drive, which packs up my property. I've got about 350 to 400 foot of land that busts up to the track. And, um, I, I'm agreeing with everybody else. I definitely don't want apartments. So the warehouses is fine. All I'm doing is asking them to, um, give us a more of a setback and whatever's there, if we can move it back 15-foot, it's nothing. I mean, that's me to you. And whatever's there, they go, they, they need to leave it alone. I don't care if it's a pine tree planted there, leave it there. And then I, I guess with a 25-foot berm, they're saying 100-foot to, at the bottom?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
By 100-foot at the bottom. So, you know, by law, it's supposed to be 300-foot industrial. Let's give us 50-foot, and then, uh, we split in half, make it 150 feet. And for 50-foot off of our property line, well, like again, whatever's there, you leave it there. If it's a pine tree or a bush or whatever, just leave it there. There's a lot of nice pine trees by there that give us a, a buffer now from what's there, and we can hear all that. But, um, just, you know, work with us, 15, like, like 15-foot off the property line is nothing. And, and they say a, a maximum of a 25-foot berm, let's make that a minimum 25-foot berm. I mean, they can come in and put a 10-foot berm, and they would be within their rights. So let's make that a minimum 25-foot berm. And is that berm going to run all the way from Highway 21 all the way around behind Goshen Hills? Is that my understanding?
I don't know. We'll get clarification on that.
That's my, I want to see how far that is. And, um... Basically, that's, that's the main thing that I want. I want to get a little bit, a little bit more setback with whatever's there before they start to burn.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Stroud.
Good evening. My name is Matt Pimentel. I live at 134 Jennifer Circle. Um... Put my information down.
Could you repeat your name again, sir?
It's Matt Pimentel. I'm at 134 Jennifer Circle.
Thank you, sir.
If you look at the diagram of, with the apartment complex, you'll see on this bottom corner where it goes kind of in an L shape, that's my property. I moved from Port Wentworth. I lived in a cookie cutter subdivision. Uh, it was the first house my wife and I had bought. My wife got pregnant with our first child, and we said we don't want to be a part of Chatham County Schools. No offense to Chatham County. We wanted to be in Effingham County where the school system is much better, less dense, and give our kids the best chance at a bright future. We then subsequently had another child. If you approve, or if, if we don't make a change, I'm going to have two apartment buildings, 15 feet from my backyard on two sides. And I have two small children that love to play in the backyard. There's a possibility that you could have tenants in these apartments that are drug dealers, that are criminals, that are registered sex offenders, and I do not want that in my backyard. Do I want a warehouse? Not particularly. But at this point, it's trying to choose the lesser of two evils. Now, I agree with the gentleman that just sat back down. I do think that it would be nice if they were to consider increasing that setback to give us a little bit more breathing room from the noise, the light pollution, the potential of, you know, uh, noxious fumes from the trucks idling at night. I work in the trucking industry. I transport equipment. I've been transporting equipment in and out of this, uh, complex. I do know that one of them is a, uh, one of the existing in the GITC is a Lowe's Distribution Center. That's a 24-hour operation. There's trucks in and out every minute of every day. Trucks will be sitting idling at 2:00 in the morning. At its current standing without the berm, I can be in my backyard with a fire lit, and while they were working on GITC, I could hear the construction equipment in the middle of the night. And I don't want that. I bought our house because it's in a quiet neighborhood, doesn't have an HOA. It's a beautiful house surrounded by beautiful people. I don't want that to change. And I hope that you guys take into consideration our concerns. And I believe that the outcome of the meeting that we had, uh, the other evening, uh, with Mr. Murray, thank you for your time on that. You did great, even though you said you didn't. They were open and willing to listen to our concerns. So I'm hoping that with the help of the board, that our concerns will be a little bit louder, that we would, we don't have a problem with the growth of the community, uh, the growth of our county and the tax revenue that we can gain from this to help improve our county. We just want, move it back a little bit. Some privacy. Allow us to keep those wonderful trees that have been there for hundreds of years. I look forward to that when I walk out into my backyard and I don't see a warehouse. I don't see a big dirt berm. I'll live with a dirt berm. I don't want a two-story apartment complex with somebody peeking into my backyard. Thank you all for my time.
Hi, my name is Julie Kounat. Let me write it down first. And I live at 136, 136 Jennifer Circle. So, uh, I'm one, next to his neighbor. So the bim that they want to build is directly to the property line, not after the property line, but before the, after the property line. So we want, uh, the trees over there from that line at least 300 feet and leave, uh, all the trees that living in there, all the birds, animals living there. Can I show you the picture of my backyard?
If you want to give it to the gentleman.
Yeah, just, just so, so you can have some idea. Just in and off, yeah. Just this one. Can you just, so I can stick?
Yes, I can. Alright. Do you have any additional comments?
Yes, yes. So we moved here three years ago. You know, the first thing, I didn't even fall in love inside my house. I fall in love outside my house. You know what they have in my yard? It's peppers. Sorry. The peppers. So I sold the peppers in my backyard, and I didn't know anything about my, inside my house. So from Texas, we moved here for a lot of reason. We look, the school system is the best school system that my child ever been. The surrounding of my neighbors in the backyard, especially all those birds that sing in my yard, is amazing. It's very relaxing neighborhood. So they want to build a bim, a tall bim, right in my backyard. I will lose all the value of my home. And I will lose all the beautiful trees that has been there for a while. So we, we don't mind the warehouses, but we want a private, you know, at least 300 feet undisturbed trees in our backyard without disturbing our habitats in there. You know, all the birds is a love, all the, well, you know, predator, whatever predator, and my garden. We don't want to go in our backyard, a big tall building in there, wall, that, you know, who's going to want to see that? We moved here in Effingham County because of those reasons. So please, can you just, guys have some, you know, setback for our properties? That's all. You know, we, we don't mind a warehouse. We just need some privacy, a good privacy area. That's it.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Kounat. So, I mean, we've, we've talked a lot about noise pollution, the natural habitat, the berm, the buffer, um... Is there any additional information?
Yeah, I got pictures.
Hi, my name's Tammy Harmon, and I, uh, been trying to, did y'all do a sound impact study since last Thursday? Because y'all said y'all were going to do that. And it's still 45 like it was last week?
Uh, ma'am, ma'am, could you address the board, please?
Okay, hey, sorry.
We'll get some answers on those questions.
Alright. Uh, anyway, uh, according to the CED, it's the Community Environmental Defense Service, that a idling truck is like 80 decibels, and that's, um, when you're living near facilities with a high-volume truck traffic, which is what we've got right now, the neighbors reported excessive noise due to truck engine idling, short, shouting, loud noise, and backup beeping. And that the facilities should be at least 1,000 feet away from residential areas. In 2008, y'all did a, it was in the Effingham thing about also being 1,000 feet. The separation between the planned residential and the current neighborhoods will be at least 1,000 feet. And the residents of Goshen Hill in that time are, was arguing with y'all, and then y'all decided that, um, the firm, the, uh, the, they decided they, okay, well then we'll put residential there instead. And it's been that way since 2008. Normally, if somebody's going to build something, a developer, they would have put those, um, instantly. I just think that we need to stop, uh, let me, let me just ask three questions. I asked about the, um, impact. Would you want to live here? Would you want to live there? Were you, y'all, have y'all seen the pictures? How the, the trees are beautiful? There, there, when I went back there, there were over 20 geese that went from this side of the road over to the water, then back over to this side. They were lost. They had nowhere to go. That's an environmental issue for the habitat of our animals. When I go in my backyard, all I gotta do is just, all I gotta do is just open my door, and I can hear birds. I can hear it. I have seen so many dead animals on 21 because of everything that's been impacted. Okay, I'm with the warehouses. That's a good or bad. Would you rather have a, a warehouse, or would you rather have apartments? No, I'd really rather have neither. But I mean, we have no choice. It's already been approved back to 2008. But I mean, I called the governor. This is how bad I'm upset about this. I'm trying to get everybody involved that I can possibly get involved. Because the more that you build warehouses and take away our habitat, you're taking away us, and we pay the taxes. And they are going up. Ever since I moved here in 2001, they've gone up every single year. And we live on septic tanks. And I think it would impact us. I just wish y'all would listen to us because we're trying so hard to fight for something that seems like such a lost cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon.
And y'all have a blessed evening, and thank you for taking the time to do this.
You as well.
Oh, wait, one more thing. Can we get this stuff, copies of this stuff? Because we were supposed to get...
What, what stuff?
All this stuff that's supposed to have been, is it on the site? Because I couldn't find it.
If you, if you'll get with staff, um, we'll try to get that worked out. Thank you.
There's not a pen up here.
I keep taking it.
My name's Jenny Woodward. I live at 203 Matt Court, which is in the very back of Goshen Hills, um, right on the railroad track. Uh, the first thing I just, I'm not telling you anything you guys don't know, but, um, on the 2020-2040 Joint Comprehensive Plan on future land use, section, sorry, I'm sorry, on, um... Section 4.1, um, bullet point number three, it says the county and cities should discourage the establishment of intense or heavy industrial or commercial land use near existing residential areas. So this, of course, um, is in conflict with that. That being said, I mean, I, I agree with what every single one of my neighbors has said thus far, that the lesser of two evils would be probably the warehouses. But I also echo what each of them have asked for already, which is some undisturbed land. Tonight, there was a new, um, slide up there that wasn't there on Thursday showing what 300-feet setback would look like. And it was presented as either 300-feet undisturbed land or 100-foot with a 25-foot tall berm. I don't understand why we can't have both. Not to be greedy, but just if what I'm hearing is that other places in the county, that 300 feet is the standard, and I understand that the PD zoning is different. If that's the standard, though, we would like to have that too, and perhaps, um, like everyone mentioned with the nature and the trees, if we could have some undisturbed land in between us and what they're currently proposing with the berm, I think it would be a win-win for everybody, um, including us. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I'm Claudia Power, and I live at 101 Lauren Drive, Rinkin, Georgia, which is one street up from where my neighbors are going to be affected by this proposed rezone. I understand their feelings. I'm the exact opposite. Let them build the darn multifamily. And you know what? Maybe if all those cars, by the way, where would they even come out? If they're going to be right beside, uh, the already industrial plant that's there, where are they going to come out? Where are all these multifamily people going to drive their cars out? But let them come out. Maybe the state then will do something about Highway 21. They've had this land for all these years. They've done nothing, but now we've got big money coming, industrials all over our county. No one seems to be doing, oh, where's the ordinances? I keep hearing about, we went to last town hall, that we're creating ordinances. Where are they? Where is our elected officials to protect the people? And that's the only thing I hear about, that these are, these are property owners, and they have the right. Well, yes, they do, but guess what? We're property owners, and we have a right. We, we have a right to have our life. So I'm not as, um, compliant as maybe our neighbors are, but I'm saying, build your darn houses. Go for it. Leave us alone. You've had this land for all this time. You've done nothing until now you're going to cash in, and we have to beg? We have to beg, try and get them to move the 300-foot berm? And that's another thing. So you said the railroad spur, you've made that concession, is that gonna be in writing? Because here's another thing that happens. This gets zoned industrial. Everybody's happy, years go by, and then something else comes up. I can't even imagine, let's say drones, all of a sudden they wanna have drones coming into the industrial. Oh, well then that's gonna be fine, cause it's already industrial. You have no more say. Once this is decided, the neighbors, the people that live here have no more say. So I say, if this thing is gonna happen, I'm not gonna ask, I'm gonna demand that we get considered and what we ask for happens, or let them build the darn multifamily houses. Fine with me, do it.
Thank you, Ms. Cowherd.
Oh, and one more thing, the taxes. That's another thing. I hear about all this progress, gonna bring revenue, wonderful. Why am I not seeing it in my tax bill? All I'm seeing is where I'm paying more money because we have progress. Means new schools, better roads, being maintained, fine. Let the progress people pay for it. I'm tired of it.
Well, this is, uh, we're, we're an appointed board, so on July eighteenth, you can ask your elected.
I certainly will. Don't you think I won't be there?
That question.
I'm just gonna share this with everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Cowherd.
You are more than welcome.
I'm tired of the people of this county not being given a consideration.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Leon Frederick. I live on Huger Street. And all I'm asking today is that we give the three hundred foot buffer. I don't think that's too much to ask for a big business. This, that's all I'm asking. You know, y'all could do the three hundred foot, the berm, everybody's happy here. This has been going on since two thousand and eight. Evidently, back in two thousand and eight, you know, the residents didn't like it then, we don't like it now. That's all I'm asking. And I don't think that's a lot to ask for. A three hundred foot berm, a three hundred foot, you know,
Buffer.
Birds, you know, I just like, finished watching the pictures with the geese. I mean, if y'all were living in this situation, y'all would want the same thing. I'm not asking anything that y'all wouldn't want. So that's all I'd ask.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is there anyone that has any additional information that hasn't been presented? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Troy McCrue. I live on one thirty-one Highland Drive. You know, I was one of the first ones in oh eight with all this. And well, I knew it's gonna come back in bodies, but we told y'all back then, we wanted it zoned R. And he said, no, M U, we got your back. Well, yeah, this is where it's come, you, where it's got here now because notifications, two thousand eighteen. People only get notified. You say it's in the Herald. How many people get the Herald around here? I mean, people on property lines supposed to get a, a, a notification. I didn't get one for the tonight's meeting. If all this wasn't going on, I wouldn't know about the night. Two thousand eighteen, he changed all kind of rules. Another night, he just said, oh, he just moved some trees around. You want me to read all the rules he changed? Seventy-five foot warehouse from fifty-five seventy-five. He took the, you know, while we're here and everything now, cause he took buffer, he took the berms out of the buffer zone. But he added a couple of trees.
Are you, sir, are you talking about the plan just before tonight?
Well, I mean, this is why we're getting to here. I mean, that, that's why he's got so much pull, I guess. You know, in, in oh eight, when it was approved, this road was here. But this road's disappeared. You know, that was part of oh eight, you know. That's where the red light was that he also took out in eighteen. You know. In the Herald in two thousand eight, nothing would ever be built within a hundred feet of our property lines. Well, now, we go to a meeting the other day and he threatens us, if you don't vote for this, we gonna do this, you know. Which ain't right. I mean, here we go with department things. There was nine units per acre, gotta change to twenty-five per acre. Y'all passed this. Have people here, would be more people here, but nobody's getting notified. My neighbors, oh, on both sides, no notification.
Sir, we don't handle the notifications, I mean, if you like.
Well, it needs to be changed and certified.
I mean, if you can take that up with staff.
That's why we're getting where we're at now.
But I mean.
With everybody fussing.
So how does everybody know about the meeting?
Because.
Tonight.
Somebody got fi, notified, didn't they, I guess, they, they found out, the note, the letters got out, so they canceled it because they said they didn't do something. So it, we spread the word.
We, we don't, we don't handle that, so.
Yeah, and we did get a, a thankful meeting at the high school, so we all went to it. But that's how I knew about it, you know.
So, sir, do you have any comments on his current proposal?
Yes, the, uh, why their proposal now is, you know, is silly, you know, to me. You know, the three hundred foot with the buffer, I don't think anybody here's gonna complain with that. But, you know, flip and flop these things, saying if you don't do this, we gonna do this, that's kinda, you know. That's bad, that's horrible. Nobody should do business that way. If y'all wanna see the articles, I have them. I also have, you know, and I'm still digging, just, there was a lot more stuff in oh eight that, that we were guaranteed that, that all this would never happen when we fought everything. And all this stuff is now, it's just kind of like this road. You know, you can watch, you know, the progression, it just kind of disappears from oh eight to eighteen. You know, he, he just kinda erased it out. I mean, it, it's got, you know, the, but my biggest thing is, you know, come address us, don't, don't be foolish. People can work with people, you know. Three hundred, you know, with berm would be great, if I'd be happy.
All right, sir, thank you.
My name's Joshua Stewart, and I live at one seven one Huger Street.
Joshua, Joshua, can you turn that mic up just a little? Thank you, sir, very much.
Gotcha. So my question is, I know this deal all comes down to the money. I'm assuming the warehouse is gonna bring in more money than the multifamily housing, that's understandable. My question is, if they're providing us with a three hundred foot conceptual layout, three hundred foot setback from our property, and also with a hundred and fifteen foot setback with a one hundred feet of berm, why can't they put the warehouse three hundred feet away with that one hundred foot berm? And just, that will make us happy. We'd have our privacy, that's what sold us on the house, and all our neighbors. The birds chirping, they annoy me personally, they're so loud, they annoy me. You hear it inside the house.
So, um, can I interrupt you a second? Uh, Ms. Dunnigan, I mean, it's a three hundred foot setback, correct? I mean, that's the proposal, is a three hundred foot setback.
No, it's a hundred and fifteen feet currently with a twenty-five foot high berm. But the standard for industrial is three hundred feet, and that's why they have it zoned PDMU. It seems like a loophole to us.
Or they're proposing.
The three hundred foot is a natural buffer, no berm.
I understand that.
Natural buffer. Or the smaller buffer with a twenty-five foot berm to,
Correct.
To protect you from the noise and the light.
Correct.
And everything else, that's, that's what it's for. The three hundred feet, natural buffer, you're gonna hear every truck that comes in over there.
Correct, sir, I understand that. I understand that, and that's why my question was, why, if they can provide a conceptual layout for three hundred feet, that's telling me that it's possible to move that warehouse back, which at first they were saying is not possible. But my question is, if they're trying to get this rezoned, and it's in their favor, they're going to make all this extra money, why can't they keep it at three hundred feet and provide us with a hundred foot berm? Leave the current trees that are there, there's at least, I'd say ninety feet from my property line to where there's a dirt road of just natural trees, old hundred-year-old oaks, pine trees, tons of birds. Like I said, they're so loud, they annoy me. These people love it. If it's possible to move that warehouse back, cause you saw the conceptual layout that says no berm, why can't they provide us with three hundred feet and also within that three hundred feet, a one hundred foot berm?
I mean, I can't.
Why? We never got an answer for why.
Mr. Chair, can we be clear about a hundred foot berm? We're talking length, not height, correct?
We're talking, yes, length.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, they're proposing twenty-five, maximum of twenty-five feet high, not minimum, maximum of twenty-five feet high, a hundred foot wide, with also fifteen feet dedicated to drainage, which they haven't said what exactly that will be on our property line. Fifteen feet from our property line over, and then pass that fifteen feet, a hundred foot wide berm, maximum of twenty-five feet.
I mean, I can't speak on, you know, behalf of them. We'll, we'll get them up there to the, address it when, when everyone's had their time to speak, but, you know, um, due to wetlands, constraints, property lines, it, they might not have, they may not be able to make the project work.
I understand that, and if so.
So if the project won't work, then they go back to what they're already allowed to do.
I understand that, sir.
This could be, um, so there, there, that, that's the new proposal. The, the other one that had, I guess that was the conceptual plan, it had the three hundred feet on it, okay, I'm sorry.
And I guess the second thing I ask, if that's not possible, I'm not a developer. I understand that might not be possible. Could they meet us in the middle? You know, if they're, if they're getting their way, you know, like these other people said, we don't want anything, really. But we're willing to sacrifice, you know. Could they meet us in the middle, leave that ninety feet of tree that's there, ninety foot of tree line, I'm sorry, and then put the berm?
All right, so we'll get.
Or could they maybe sacrifice the height of the building? I think the other buildings around, I'm not a hundred percent sure, the other buildings are forty-five feet high. That berm, I think that showed, with a twenty-five foot high berm from my backyard, you wouldn't be able to see a forty-five foot high building, it would just barely cover it. But with the fifty-six feet, you would still see. And I understand they're planting trees, but what if I need to sell my house in the next five years? You'll still see a warehouse back there. You know, I can't wait seven to.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you say forty-five feet was the building height, or was that fifty-six?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, okay.
So.
I didn't ask you to stand up. Mister, Mister Marshall, if you're gonna speak, you're gonna have to speak in the microphone.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me just clarify something, please. The exhibit that shows the three hundred foot buffer was for sound only. That is not saying that we are asking for that, okay? But if we moved it back to there, here is where, and that, based on what the county's approvals in the past have been, where you go to a three hundred foot natural buffer, there is no berm. The sound impact from those buildings, if it is done that way, penetrates into the neighborhood aggressively, so that.
Yes, sir. We. Is it possible to do the three hundred foot setback with the layout there? Is it possible to do the three hundred foot setback with the layout, which Mr. actually saying that?
So why would you provide a conceptual layout? And I guess my question is, this is not currently zoned for, I'm sorry.
Because he was, I believe what Mr. Marshall says, because he was required to by the, the county, he was required to do that.
No, the county's not asked us for any of that.
Okay.
That we have volunteered to put all that stuff together.
I'm sorry. Can I finish before I lose my train of thought?
Okay, all right, go, go ahead, go ahead.
So all I'm, all I'm asking is if the building cannot be moved, we'll accept it a hundred and fif, well, me, I can't speak for everybody, but I think I speak for a lot of us in this room. I'll accept a hundred fifteen feet away with a twenty-five hu, foot high berm, if I cannot see the top of that building at forty-five feet, because that's, as you saw on one of those slides, when you look at the projection, it's not gonna cover fifty-six feet. And that's too close from our yard, from, from residences. We moved out here for peace. We're okay paying higher property taxes in Chatham County. I came from Chatham County, cause it's so peaceful, great schools. I would've moved to Garden City if I wanted a warehouse in my backyard. And I think it's a small compromise, and it will turn up, what's a lose-lose situation for us, into a win-win. Bigger win for them, but a small victory for us. So if it's not possible to move it back three hundred feet, you know, maybe compromise. Either keep it where it is, lower the height, raise the berm, or maybe move it back two hundred feet, keep the trees that are there? Just compromise, and that's it. Because this is not currently zoned industrial or PDMU for industrial. So they have to, you know, they have to come before y'all. So please just hear our concerns and make a wise decision. Think if it was your backyard, cause it very well could be. And that's all I ask.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Good afternoon, my name is Ron Solanas. And during the town hall meeting we had the other day, I just wanna clarify this. The gentleman showed, put up a slide that showed where, uh, the line of sight from the back of a house, anywhere along this, uh, proposal to the warehouses, and it listed the warehouses being forty-five foot high, we wouldn't see them with a twenty-five foot berm. That was his drawing and what he exhibited on the TV for all of us to see. So I'm a little confused here, because now all of a sudden it's jumped to fifty-three feet?
Fifty-six, and that, and this slide that we're looking at is, I mean, it shows the forty-five foot, but, I mean, the arrow is clearly above it.
Okay, but what he showed the other day at our town hall meeting.
I mean, Mr. Solanas, I, I, I was, you know, we weren't a part of that meeting, so I, I can't speak to what was said there.
You can certainly ask him to see that slide. And that slide clearly showed a line of sight.
But what we're deciding on and moving on is the information that's presented tonight.
Okay. So things have changed, apparently, and you guys are gonna go for it.
Do you have any additional thoughts?
That's why people don't trust you folks sometimes, because you, you, you're only seeing one side of it tonight. Clearly, that's what he presented the other night. And everybody was here to witness that, and it was forty-five feet tall with a twenty-five foot berm.
Forty-five feet, that's it. Yeah, I mean, it shows forty-five feet.
It's well above the forty-five feet. The arrow.
I mean, that's what it's showing.
Projects out almost to sixty-foot mark.
I, I mean, it, we, we, well, we weren't part of that meeting, I'm sorry.
And I have one more, well, two more questions I forgot to ask. So would there be any way to put a condition on what type of use these facilities would have? Like, could it be, possibly be a twenty-four hour Lowe's warehouse? Cause me, with all these other people, we hear this Lowe's warehouse in our backyards. At two in the morning, our bedroom's face this property currently, and it's so far away. So even with the berm, I can only imagine if this is a twenty-four hour operation, trucks idling, the impact it'll have on us and our families. And then also, is, is it possible that a rail spur could come off in the future? You know, right behind our house, a CSX line?
I mean, you know, whether, whether or not the board's gonna side with staff, but, you know, staff made a recommendation, no rail. So, you know, whether, you know, vote hasn't been cast, but that is the opinion of, of staff.
And if this gets approved and it, you know, no rail, there's nothing in the future that could amend that?
Not without coming back to a meeting like this.
I got you, cause it's hard to say, you know, if you'd rather have a apartment complex thirty feet from your yard or warehouse without knowing all the details. And I feel like a lot of us are kinda in the dark as far as what could possibly come with that warehouse, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there anyone else, um, to speak? Um, Mr. Marsh, Marshall, would you like? Um, so if you, if you heard anything that you'd like to clarify, um, before we close public comment?
Hmm. The exhibits that were shown the other night, uh, showed a building at seventy-five feet. It showed a building at, the arrows it pointed to forty-five feet. Both were on those drawings. It also shows a profile, this is for the meeting that y'all were not in attendance. It also showed, uh, in that profile, the, um, thirty-five feet for apartments at the thirty-foot line away from the northern property line, and fifty-five feet, um, a hundred and seventy-five feet off the northern property line. and fifty-five feet, a hundred and seventy-five feet off the northern property line. The drawings that we show, if you look closely at them, you'll see existing grade dashed well below the building. The line that was, that these building heights are drawn from is conceptual. We can lower the building and get well with, under the line of sight. What I think we ought to have in this and any other zonings or site plan approvals, where line of sight is a consideration, is a condition that before a building permit is issued, the engineers have to draw it out as to exactly what the obstruction is, the berm or trees or whatever, between a particular spot and where, when you set what the finished floor elevation is gonna be for the building, or excuse me, what the finished grade of the ground outside, which is where you start the measurement from, or wherever you started from, and that, based on the approval, that that is what controls where the height of the building is. So that it isn't approved at forty-five feet, and then because of topographical conditions where the natural ground is going uphill, where in our case, the natural ground is going downhill, which makes it a lot easier for us to build a taller building and still not have the neighborhood see it. But there are many places around here where the building might be going uphill, but you get an example that assumes it's flat terrain, rather than taking into account what the real terrain is. I own some property, I guess each one of you, I don't know if everybody in the room owns property or not, but what you own is yours. Mr. Exley owns this property, and he's got some nice trees on it. For people to come in and say, "I bought because of those trees, and now you can't do anything with it," kind of smacks the wrong way to me, y'all. It's not their tree. Nice old trees. Mr. Exley doesn't want to take them down if they can be saved. But it's also, he already has an approval for fifteen feet off that property line to clear everything. So please keep that in mind. We would like to stay with what we've asked for, which is a hundred and fifteen feet. If that is not what you are willing to approve, approve something, and we'll go to the county commission and see what we can do. But the berm, excuse me. The berm is more important than what I hear a lot of people expressing. You can hear the warehouses that are there now that are, I don't know, five hundred, thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet away. There's no berm. When we build, if we build a berm, it's gonna capture that noise. We did noise studies of what's there now, which has those warehouse, that warehouse activity plays into those studies. And we're proposing to build a berm that's gonna improve over what they have right now. Two-to-one slope, a hundred feet, fifteen feet for storm drainage along the northern property line gives the best protection. So I hope you will approve what we're asking. Y'all happy?
I have a question, Mr. Marshall. So what is the most buffer that you'll be interested in offering? I mean, you say a hundred and fifteen feet, but can you do a hundred and fifty feet, two hundred feet with a berm? And make your floor plan work with these, with this construction? Because you can't go three hundred, you said.
Well, no, we can't. To go anything more than a hundred and fifteen with a twenty-five-foot berm is for what purpose? Is it for noise?
For sight.
It's for aesthetics, aesthetics.
Show some perspective.
Sir, I'm sorry, we, Mr. I, 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 I'm sorry. So let's, nobody interrupt anyone else again, please.
The berm is for noise. The berm is also for sight. The topography of, and I'm right now saying to myself, why did we put an example up there that went above existing grade? Because if we had our buildings said, can y'all see on there where the existing grade line is? If we had our buildings down at that level, there wouldn't be any question of what we could build. Though I think that if you would approve it, there needs to be a condition, that we would ask for a condition, that the line of sight exhibit to show from that the height of the building is not gonna be seen over the berm.
How much undisturbed buffer are you willing to give up?
A hundred and fifteen.
You can't go any more than that. And have a berm.
What, I don't mean to be antagonistic, but I'm probably coming across that way. If the purpose is line of sight and sound, and we can accomplish it in a hundred and fifteen, why throw away the other land? It isn't doing anything for sound, and it isn't doing anything for line of sight.
Mr. Chair, can you have Mr. Marshall say that again about line of sight, please? As a condition, he would do what again, please?
Before we can get a building, or as part of our building permit application, we have to show the finished floor of the building as it's going to be built in relation to the berm, as it would be required to be built, so that the line of sight does not, the building is not seen over the top of the berm.
Each building.
Each building. Yes.
Thank you for repeating that.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, very, very, very quickly.
Spit this out real fast. I believe what my neighbors are asking for would be an increase in the distance to preserve the seventy, the well-over-seventy-five-foot-tall, a hundred-plus-year-old trees that are beautiful behind our homes. I believe that's what they're asking, is to see if we can just increase that distance a little bit.
Sir, sir, I need you to address the...
I'm so sorry. I believe what they're asking is to increase that distance slightly, so we can maintain that. Because the, the only question that I came up to ask, if we go with that one hundred and fifteen feet buffer with the twenty-five-foot minimum, two-to-one slope, how close to the property line are they going to come and clear? Are they going to come all the way to the property line?
Fifteen feet will be undisturbed.
Okay, so we're only getting fifteen feet from the fence line? That, that, that was my question, is, is how far from the existing property line is gonna be undisturbed of that hundred and fifteen foot with the two-to-one slope? Thank you.
I'll get an answer for that. Could you clarify on that?
The fifteen feet would be disturbed for drainage. That's the only reason. To the extent that existing drainage goes in a way that we don't have to touch...
It won't be clear.
No. No, we don't want to touch any tree in there. You know, we really...
I think that's where we're getting...
It's to our advantage, because if we touch the tree and the tree, the tree is part of the line of sight protection. So the more we can save of what's there naturally, the better off we are. So the only thing that we would have to do is impact it, and the toll of the berm would be at the fifteen-foot line.
What, are you planning to do any planting on top of the berm?
Yes. We have not developed an exhibit yet on that, but we do have some exhibits of, is that easy to pick up and show?
I mean, it...
But, excuse me, there are examples of where berms have planted on it, and we intend to plant it, yes.
Mr. Chair, the ordinance has things as well.
That's great.
The ordinance has things as well.
I mean, recommended Eli Agnes and things like that, that gives you an additional five, ten, fifteen feet.
And get a chainsaw if you want to go through it after six months to a year.
That's great, sir.
And Mr. Chair, I think that Mr. Marshall also said it was gonna be irrigated berm. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, the, let me qualify that. The irrigation would be a broadcast irrigation, not an intense, you know, little bit individual heads every three feet and that kind of stuff, but, yes.
All right, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Yes, sir, I'll have one more comment.
On the warehouses, I mean, we need stipulate twenty-four hours, nine to five hazardous waste. I mean, if they're putting it on my doorstep, I don't want the whole thing blew my house up. I mean, there's, that, especially, there's gotta be a lot of stipulations, what it can have in these warehouses. I got my wells right out there in my backyard. I mean, what's seeping in, my water, I'm feeling my grandbabies.
So they're not asking for, you know, there's a light industrial, heavy industrial warehouse storage is what this use is. Not heavy, no smoke stacks.
On the other side, the warehouse, and then not on our side. I mean, we're, because since he took, you know, didn't put the berms in that was supposed to win in, louder and louder. You know, if we'd got them berms down where they're supposed to be, you know, an eighteen that they took out that we didn't know about, you know, it would be a lot quieter now. But the biggest thing is, you know, what are we gonna do, nine to five? I mean, I'm a light industrial, I mean...
The county's ordinances have conditions for noise, lighting. I do not believe there is anything on a warehouse for hours of operation, though, on the, on these type warehouses.
For actual operating hours for the warehouses, no, there are not.
So there are none on a storage type warehouse like this is? Yes, sir. Very quickly, Mr. Marshall.
We have not asked for a rail spur. And we don't intend, we don't think that there's enough rail frontage that we control that would allow us to get a rail spur in. But we will gladly accept a condition that says no rail spur is allowed.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, could you have Katie describe the process from here forward before you talk about anything, so she could make sure everybody understands what the process is moving forward?
Sure. And yeah, I assume you're talking about the process with the voting, the county commissioners meeting?
Sketch plan.
Sketch plan.
So after this, on July eighteenth, this item will move to the Board of Commissioners with recommendation from the planning board. The Board of Commissioners will hear and vote on the matter at that time for a decision. As far as what comes after that from a pre-development aspect, I will turn it over to Chelsea.
So after the board makes their decision, if that is an approval, then depending on if a sketch plan is one of the requirements for this PD, it would then have to go through the sketch plan process, which again would come before this planning board and then the Board of Commissioners. And then once that process is complete and if approved, then they would be able to apply for their development plan permitting and land disturbing activity permitting.
All right, thank you, ladies. All right, I'll close public comment.
Discussion.
No, I'm pretty clear.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's tough. I mean, I do think the berm works. I think the berm works whenever you get to planting on top of it. You know, I don't know. Do you have any discussion?
I think we've discussed it plenty of times, the, the three-hundred-foot. I know to a lot of us, I don't want to speak for y'all, but seems excessive for industrial, especially when you can get a better result with the berm, I believe, so.
And I just want to say, you know, once again, this board is an appointed board. This is a recommendation to the commissioners, and, you know, the, the final vote is taking, taken with, with the FGM County Commissioners. So if y'all are ready, I'll call for a motion.
I want to say one thing before we do that. As I see it tonight, we're looking at either putting industrial warehouses with some protection for the neighbors, or we can put multifamily housing that's already approved. I mean, we don't, we don't have to come back before this board to do multifamily housing that's gonna provide no protection from that development for this subdivision. And so for me sitting up here having to make a decision, I'm thinking of what, and I know a lot of you guys don't agree with this, but what's in the long term gonna be best for the resident? What's gonna provide him more protection? And that's what I have to base my decision on. With that being said, I want to make a motion that we approve it with the, a minimum of a twenty-five-foot-tall berm with the line of sight provision that warehouses won't be seen. You know, the berm will be tall enough, the vegetation, that it won't be seen, and there will be no rail spur running on that property.
Motion.
And how many feet buffer?
A hundred and fifteen.
I have a motion. Is there any discussion? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Smith. All's in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all.
July the eighteenth, Board of Commissioners.
You want to wait two minutes or something?
Two-minute break?
Yeah.
I'm taking a two-minute recess.
All right, everyone's gone, um, item number ten. Public hearing for Deana C. Rowdwald, his agent for Land J Sanders, Inc., request to rezone four point three three acres from R one to B two to allow for business development. Located at twenty-seven, twenty-six, Highway one nineteen north, this is the third district. Ms. Donegan.
Yes, I apologize, hold on just seconds, my battery doesn't die.
Your battery is running low. Might want to plug it in. We're not going anywhere. We're not leaving, we're not, we're not leaving, not after this.
Seventeen minutes, seventeen minutes, plenty of time, plenty of time.
Yeah, good.
So the applicant here is proposing, um, to develop this property in such a manner where they are putting in limited business development sort of up in this area of the property to accommodate an office for a mobile forklift tire and repair business, sorry, mobile, mobile forklift tire and repair business. Uh, there will be no retail operations on site. There in the immediate area, since we are right on the border with Guyton, um, is Guyton's equivalent of B one zoning. Staff is recommending approval.
All right, thank you ma'am. Um, any questions, comments from the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Bar Thomas. Own the twenty acres to the east of the property. Um, in two thousand and two, Effingham County recorded an illegal plat across this property that we're looking at and across my property. Um, for an easement, a forty foot drainage easement. At, in two thousand and twenty, Effingham County came through and cleared one point four acres of my land and a portion of this land. Um, until this easement is taken care of and everything worked out with that, I, I asked that y'all table this so that we can, and just get Effingham County back in talking, cause they refuse to talk anymore about this, so.
So can you say again what, what happened?
Is it this ditch you're referring to on the plat?
Mm-hmm. Effingham County recor- recorded the plat, got no signatures, got no deeds. And then in two thousand and twenty, they came through and just started clearing land. They cut down probably seventeen thirty plus inch trees off of my property. They were trying to cut down the forty-eight inch live oak. Luckily, I caught them before all that went down. Then they came back on my property after we had established that they did not have an easement. Spent four days surveying on my property. Um, with EOM, and EOM had been notified that they did not have an easement. And now, you know, Effingham County refuses to discuss it with me. They told their lawyer, they don't wanna discuss it anymore. So this property that is being rezoned is involved with this, it had property, it had trees cleared off of it. It has that easement across it. They just took all the trees and threw them in that ditch. And so there they've been for the past two years, causing, you know, drainage issues. So I asked for them to table it until this can get resolved. Thank you.
Exactly is that easement, could you show us?
There is no easement. They, they had a easement recorded along.
So, I mean, let me just interrupt, I mean, this is a plat from, or survey from ninety-six, I mean, it shows the ditch on it. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
And?
Does it show an easement on it? No.
So.
Effingham County had an easement recorded.
Mr. Chairman, could, just, just to clarify, what, what property is it that you own that you are?
I own the twenty acres to the east.
To the east, okay, so this is not related to?
No, it's related to this property as well.
Okay. But as far as rezoning?
Easement across this property as well.
Okay, so that's a matter that you're referencing between you and the county as it pertains to your property, okay.
It's, it's easement, it's, you know, drainage that they, the county has messed up for my property, all the properties in Guyton that goes through this property.
So you had joined this property?
Yes, I do.
You're the grinder, WF grinder?
Uh, yes, it's actually, I bought the property in twenty nineteen.
Nineteen.
So where they cleared is right down to property line?
Yes, right down my property line. One point four acres.
And the county did that?
Yes, EOM.
I, can I ask about the use being proposed? The use they're proposing, that what we're here for is the zoning aspect of it, I understand you got concerns over past history, but from a standpoint of the, the proposed change from R one to B two, is there anything you'd like to say related to that?
I don't think it's in, in keeping with, I mean, a, a repair shop, there's no repair shops, it's all businesses on, on one nineteen there coming out of the Guyton. It's like retail. I don't think it should be rezoned for a commercial property that, or, or industrial type repair shop.
I just, and I perhaps explained that badly, um, the, the business is, is mobile, they go onsite to repair forklifts and two tires.
Well, that wasn't clear. And there was no, I was not provided with any information in the notification either.
So B two would not allow them to repair onsite?
That is correct, not at least without a conditional use.
Okay. That, that was a question ahead, cause that seemed like a, if it was repair onsite, that seemed fairly intense for B two.
And staff has been in, in contact with City of Guyton to verify their commercial zoning across the street.
You know, just trying to stay in our lane, I mean, I, I think what we're talking about is zoning, I mean, now that staff is aware of this situation, um, I think they can be better prepared, you know, especially with upper staff here to try to work through whatever happened with this ditch. Um, and then if it's not resolved or there's still an issue, then it doesn't move forward past the county commissioners, but I mean, I don't know that we've accomplished anything by tabling a rezoning tonight over a easement dispute, or, or a drainage easement dispute, I guess.
Uh, it's also a drainage across that property as well, so I mean, I don't know what that, how they plan to, I mean, there's no site plan, there's no nothing to tell me what will happen on the property that will affect that easement. Or, or affect my property, cause that property juts into my property.
Well, you know, the first step is getting it rezoned and then you have all the rules to follow for drainage.
Right.
Detention, all that kinda stuff.
But usually there's a site plan associated, like everything else that we've seen tonight for rezoning had a site plan associated with it.
It's not a requirement there.
Is, what are?
It's not, a recite plan's not a requirement for a B two rezoning.
Um, it is a site plan or a plat, they submitted in this case, a plat and, um, honestly, there's not
I know what the plat looks like, I mean.
Yeah.
Very much to the site development whatsoever. And sir, if you would see the young lady over there, she can get your contact information so that we can follow up with your easement complaint.
Okay, they, they have my contact information.
Well, sorry about that.
I'm gonna clarify after you all stay. I'm Deana C. Rowdwald, and I'm representing the Cellar L and J, um, Incorporated LLC. And the site plan proposal for this is a thirty foot buffer, if you'll look at the map, you'll see a good bit of trees. So there are some surrounding, um, fields that are vacant and residential areas. Across our two heavy commercial areas, a dollar general ingress of egress of, um, the Hidden Creek, Hidden Lake subdivision. Several hundred houses, and then you have a pharmacy also to the left. So this parcel would be identified as having a tucked back business, um, not over four thousand square feet with a thirty foot buffer to allow for that, the residential and the vacant, um, fields around that. There will be three F three fifties that will be parked there, all, at, at all times, maybe one more. And they can clarify here as well. But this is a, a place for them to go and organize, pay bills, pick up parts and go to the ports. Go to the warehouses to actually work on the forklifts. So this will not have a multitude of people in and out of this, uh, piece, this parcel. Which I think is great, especially with how much you have this so trafficking across, um, the road. So that might help a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Rowdwald. Is anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Discussion from the board. All right, I call for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve with staff. Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all is in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. And, I mean, the issue with the easement hopefully can be addressed or at least discussed by commission meeting.
Have the second reading.
And, and to make this change, there has to be two readings as well, so the commissioners will have to read it twice. Item eleven is a public hearing for McBride Properties, request to rezon five acres from R one to B three for business development located on Mill Pond Road, this is the fifth district. Is, let me see, Ms. Donegan.
All right, so this similarly, is a similar proposition where the applicant wishes to do, uh, some minimal reaches to a rezon to do some minimal development to the property. Where it accommodates a five thousand square foot storage building and office space for their business as well as minimal parking. Um, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you ma'am, discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval with all staff recommendation.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. So consideration of an amendment to the Code, this item fourteen. Part two, official code, appendix C, article three of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances responding to title thirty-six of the official code of Georgia. Ms. Donegan.
Um, so per the code of Georgia, uh, title thirty-six, each county within the state is required to have a county surveyor.
Can I ask, could we table this until the end of the meeting and go on with these sketch plans? Didn't have our discussion.
If, if you would like to, um, if you'd like to, just don't close the, the public meeting for the sketch plans.
Okay. Is the board good with that, get these sketch plans out of the way? Does that matter? All right, go ahead, Chelsea.
All right.
Sorry, guys.
So this ordinance revision, uh, will comply with that and, um, it does allow, um, the county manager or designee to appoint that, um, county surveyor. So staff is recommending approval for the ordinance revision.
All right, discussion.
Seems like it's in order. Um, good idea.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? My call for a motion, motion to approve. Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Thank you, Ms. Chelsea. Item number one, that ends public hearing. Item number one, sketch plan, Three Birds Development LLC, request approval of sketch plan for the North Track Development located on Knoll Sea Conaway Road, proposed zoning R three, this is the first district.
Yes, sir, so this rezoning, um, was approved at the June sixth, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, within this sketch plan, there is a stub out to the property located to the northwest of this parcel. Uh, the open space, uh, for this project does include the one point three seven acres in the front. Um, that property will be dedicated to the county. Uh, water and sewer will be provided by the county, um, the applicant does propose to extend water and sewer up to this project. Um, paved roads less than twenty-eight feet will not be permit, will not permit, um, parking. So, uh, anything twenty-eight feet needs to, um, have parking, you know, not permitted, uh, on the street. Um, staff is recommending approval for this sketch plan.
Discussion. Is this item sixteen? It's item number one on sketch plan?
Yes, the number sixteen in your binder.
Yes, I'm sorry. Do me off.
So, w- w- I guess my question is, what's the difference between what was proposed in the zoning application, the second access point? Didn't the access loop around the park at one point, or am I misremembering that?
No, you're correct, there's only one access to, um, Highway thirty, and then we do have the stub out to the property, um.
Yeah, I don't think there was ever two on thirty.
Okay.
Is that what you were asking?
The original, the original concept plan had that, but, um, the sketch plan does only have one access.
I'm not necessarily saying this is you, I just thought I remembered it slightly different.
If there's no further discussion, I call for a motion. Make a motion to approve. Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Zipper, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Item two is sketch plan for Rogan DeMarco, request approval of a sketch plan for Winfield parcel, see any townhomes located on Knoll Sea Conaway Road. Zone PD, this is the first district.
Yes, sir, so this thirty-three unit townhome subdivision will be located in phase one of the Winfield subdivision, which is a PD. Uh, this development will also be served by county sewer, water and reuse. Uh, access will be off of Conaway Road. Um, a twenty-five foot buffer is included along Highway thirty and Conaway Road. Uh, there is an existing berm within that buffer, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you ma'am, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, no, this Elick Mesker with the EMC Engineering, um, this is kinda one of the last pieces of Winfield, it was, uh, I think approved in two thousand and four, somewhere around there. So, uh, up, up here in the front was supposed to be a, you know, commercial multifamily apartments, townhomes. Uh, they've kinda chipped away at some of that with some additional residential lots, and then this is just kinda the leftover piece of three acres. Um, so falls within the original PD guidelines for development, and so that's what we are proposing is to add some townhomes.
All right, sir, questions? So it uses the ex- existing drainage that was already put in place for the subdivision?
Yeah, um, so there's water, sewer and drainage stubbed out from Tailwind Drive um, over to this property, and all of the detention was built during phase one.
Sidewalks?
Uh, yeah, yes, sir.
Lighting?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, all is in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item three is a sketch plan for Greenland Developers, request approval of a sketch plan for Brunson Station, AKA Hellme Development located on Knoll Sea Conaway Road, zone PDR, the second district.
Mr. Chair, I am gonna step down, I don't have anything to do with this one, but I do have some business dealings directly with Greenland, so I'll step down for this one.
All right, sir. Ms. Chelsea.
This three hundred and four unit subdivision, subdivision is a mix of single family and multifamily. Um, this parcel was zoned PD residential in February of twenty twenty-two. Um, a thirty foot buffer is provided around the entire parcel, and the amenities do include a dog park, uh, pool and accessory structure along with multipurpose fields and walking trails. Um, Highway thirty and Collet Henley Road is part of the transportation master plan and will be improved. Um, that is, um, in works between the developer and the county, and staff is recommending approval.
All right, thank you ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Brett Bennett, Greenland Developers, as Ms. Chelsea mentioned, the PD was approved back in February two, twenty twenty-two. We had pretty extensive meetings with county staff, uh, elected officials to plan this project out. Uh, included many amenities. Included many amenities that were, were not required. In fact, we were commended at the approval for being so willing to work with the county to deliver a project that they could be supportive of and to set the example for future projects. Typically, in a PUD, as I think it was discussed tonight, a, a master plan is attached. In essence, it's a sketch plan that is attached and it's approved along with the PD zoning, which was done, again, back in February as well. At that meeting, there was some indication or included in a motion that, that we would be coming back for a sketch plan. This project has since been largely designed. We are coming back for a sketch planned. Virtually nothing has changed. After survey, you might have a little bit of lot line movement slightly. The number of lots have not changed. All the amenities are still the same in practically the same locations. Elick Metzger with EMC Engineering is here to answer any specific questions you may have.
Thank you, sir.
Discussion. Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Higgins. All is in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item 4 is a sketch plan for Terramore Development. As agent for Ashley Fleetwood, George and Angela Usher. Request approval for a sketch plan, Dollar General, number 25069, located on Shawnee Road and Highway 21 is on B2, and this is the 3rd District. Ms. Chelsea.
So at the May 2nd, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, the rezoning and variance for this project was approved. The buffer variance, and along with this sketch plan as well, does include conditions that the buffer reduction only applies in case of a necessary drain field expansion. And a 30-foot buffer will be adhered to between the commercially zoned property and residential zone parcels across Etheridge Road. The buffer can include the detention pond, as you see here on the sketch plan. However, if that pond is not needed or does need to change, a 30-foot vegetated buffer will remain in place along the Etheridge Road side of the property. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you ma'am. Can you say that one more time? I remember discussing it about the, the buffer and the?
There was a drainage issue on Etheridge.
Right. So, um, the planning board spoke of the, the drain, the drain field to the south of the property. However, at the Board of Commissioners meeting, it was also put in place that if the detention pond was not needed and not needed in the buffer, then the 30-foot buffer along Etheridge Road would still have to stay. So that condition was added at the Board of Commissioners meeting.
As a part of a buffer reduction?
Yes.
Any discussion?
No, I think the engineering was designed to fix that Etheridge Street problem, too. Make a motion to approve with staff for, all with staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All is in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you. Did we miss anything? Are we done? Meeting adjourned.